Good evening. The time is now 5:30 PM on Wednesday, the 17th of January, 2024, and this public meeting of the DC State Board of Education will come to order. The roll will now be called to determine the presence of a quorum. Director Butler, please call the roll.
Thank you. Representative Kelly. Representative Vierfloh.
Here.
Representative Washington.
Present.
Representative Yarkin.
Present.
Representative Williams.
Present.
Representative Chang. Representative Goulet.
Here.
Representative O'Leary.
Here.
Representative Henderson.
Here.
Representative Best. Representative Thompson.
Present.
Representative Reed.
Here.
Representative Patterson.
Present.
Representative O'Leary, you have a quorum.
Thank you. A quorum has been determined and the State Board will now proceed with the business portion of the meeting. Each year, the State Board must elect a President and Vice President to provide leadership and oversight. As the longest-serving member of the State Board, it is my honor to serve the election officer for the role of President. And I'm the longest-serving member who's on the board. I will now entertain nominations for President. After all nominations have been received, candidates can address the body for one minute. Seconds are not needed for nominations. Are there nominations for the role of President?
I nominate Representative Henderson for the role of President.
Representative Henderson has been nominated for President. Representative Henderson, do you accept the nomination?
I do.
Are there further nominations?
I nominate Representative Thompson.
Seeing no further nominations, we have two candidates.
Student reps can't nominate. It has to be an elected member of the State Board.
Okay.
Madam Director, I nominate President Thompson. Ward seven, Representative Thompson.
Okay. Are there further nominations? Seeing no further nominations, we have two candidates for the position of President. Representative Henderson in Ward five and Representative Thompson or Vice or President Thompson in Ward seven. Each candidate will have one minute to speak. Representative Henderson, you're first.
Thank you. In my one minute, I will just say that I would call our leadership to commit to regular proactive and inclusive two-way communication and an efficient and fair flow of work through our committees and through the board. I was reminded by a colleague today that institutional dysfunction is not just about leadership, but also the members. So I'd also like to call and challenge all the members, myself included, to engage more deeply, more consistently, and more constructively in all our board work this coming year. I would also challenge us on the report card work to push harder. This is one of the areas where we have authority to act, and I believe we need to use that authority to act on behalf of our students and schools to make sure that what we are presenting our families is as transparent and accurate as we are able to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Henderson. President Thompson.
Good evening. I appreciate the opportunity to address the body. I reached out to members earlier today in hopes that they will support my continued leadership. I've had the opportunity to serve as Vice President and President only for a year, but I believe we've achieved a lot of good work during that time as a body. I think it's important that we continue to do work that sets us apart as an effective and forward-thinking board. I'm really proud of our work around not just the budget process for our agency, but really moving forward education priorities for the city. I also am really proud of the fact that we've been able to incorporate member feedback and public feedback into every single one of our statutory resolutions, which I don't think we've ever had consistent unanimous votes on those things. And so I appreciate your time today and hope many of you will support my nomination.
Thank you. The motion is on the election of the President. Each member will be called and they will respond with the name of their preferred candidate. Director Butler, please call the roll.
Thank you. For reference, just to be clear, I will only be calling elected members. Representative Williams.
President, Representative Thompson.
Representative Chang has not arrived yet. Representative Goulet. Representative Henderson.
Representative Henderson.
Representative Best.
Representative Thompson.
Representative Reed.
Representative Henderson.
Representative Patterson.
Representative Thompson.
Representative O'Leary.
Representative Thompson.
Representative Thompson.
Representative Thompson.
Representative O'Leary, the board has reelected Ebony Rose Thompson of Ward seven with a vote of six to two.
Congratulations, former and now current President Ebony Rose Thompson.
At this time, we are going to turn the meeting over to our newly-elected President, and we will have Vice President, excuse me, former Vice President O'Leary switch places with newly-elected President Thompson. Thank you. All right. All right, now that we have changed seats, I want to thank Representative O'Leary for presiding over the meeting and getting us to this point at the meeting. I will now entertain nominations for Vice President. After all nominations have been received, candidates can address the body for one minute. Seconds are not needed for nominations. Are there nominations for the role of Vice President? Representative Best.
I would like to nominate Representative Patterson.
Any further nominations?
Do you accept?
Apologize, I accept.
It doesn't call for exceptions in this script.
I nominate myself and also accept.
Okay. Any further nominations? Okay. Seeing none, we have two candidates for the position of Vice President. Representative Patterson of Ward eight, excuse me, of Ward at large rep who helps from Ward eight, and Representative Reed from Ward eight. Each candidate will have one minute to speak. Representative Patterson.
Thank you. For the last three years, I've had the opportunity to serve on the Administrative Committee, which has allowed me, and I don't know if anyone has ever got to do that before, but has allowed me to watch both the President and the Vice President of three different terms serving their capacities. I think that has allowed me to really see how to work with each other, how to be more inclusive, and just to make sure that our body of work is moving along. There was good and there was bad. I hope that I will take the good and serve as a good Vice President to this body. We have such great work ahead of us. I think we can be a lot more effective if we're working together, that we're communicating more, and that we're just making sure that we have the type of working relationships that we need to move this body. I look forward to working with each of you, and I hope that I have your support. Thank you.
Representative Reed.
Thank you, members. It looks like I might be the only candidate for this election and who will possibly serve on our leadership team that's not running for election or reelection. And that's not a swipe at anyone. It's, we gotta get work done. We have to be focused on the key tasks that the board has been entrusted with. I think you all have seen me as a partner of getting work done, collaborating with you, showing up to your events, also being efficient, being mindful of our ethics. So I hope that you consider my candidacy for Vice President so that we can continue the work of establishing and executing a strategic plan, making sure that we execute our task of the report card, the financial literacy standards, all the things that come about, as well as continue to work collaboratively with our agency partners and make sure that they know that we are a strong voice at the table. Thank you.
All right, thank you to both representatives. The motion is on the election of Vice President. Each member will be called and they will respond with the name of their preferred candidate. Director Butler, please call the roll.
Representative Williams.
Representative Reed.
Representative Chang.
Representative Patterson.
Representative Goulet.
Representative Patterson.
Representative Henderson.
Representative Reed.
Representative Best.
Representative Patterson.
Representative Reed.
Representative Reed.
Representative Patterson.
Representative Patterson.
I have to add that. Representative O'Leary.
Representative Patterson.
President Thompson.
Representative Patterson. With a vote of six to three, a new Vice President of the DC State Board is Representative Patterson at large.
Thank you. Executive Director Butler, if it's in order, could I do a motion to reconsider the vote on the President just to allow Representative Chang to be recorded his vote? Is that, would that be in order? No, we're not. Okay, all right.
So congratulations, Representative Patterson, now Vice President Patterson. All right. We're gonna do another seat change, so bear with us. All right. Members, we have a draft agenda before us. Are there any corrections or additions to the agenda? Okay. Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
All right, I think I heard Vice President Patterson. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Representative O'Leary. It's been properly moved and seconded. I will ask for the yeas and the nays. All in favor, please? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Perfect, motion is approved. We now, we now have the minutes from our January 3rd working session. Is there a motion to adopt these minutes?
So moved.
Is there a second?
So moved.
I'll take that as a second, Representative O'Leary. I have to get used to the new titles. With the motion being properly moved and seconded, is there any discussion? All right. Seeing no discussion, the motion is to adopt these minutes. I will again ask for the yeas and the nays. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion is approved. On behalf of the DC State Board of Education and its members, I want to welcome everyone properly to our public meeting for January. The State Board plans to continue its in-person posture, so I appreciate your snowy attendance this evening, for our public meetings. The State Board holds its regularly-scheduled public meetings at 4:41, Fourth Street Northwest. Our meeting is also being broadcast live via the District Knowledge Network. I want to take a moment to thank Representative O'Leary for being, serving as our Vice President this past year and all the work he put in. Yesterday, the Board hosted a webinar celebrating the release of our report and recommendations for healthy school facilities. The report provides policymakers and the public with an overview of the policies, regulations, and standards that govern the district's pre-kindergarten through 12th grade public education buildings and grounds. It also includes recommendations for how leaders in DC can collaborate across agencies to ensure all of DC's public school facilities are safe, healthy, educationally appropriate, and equitable. I want to thank everyone who was involved in this work, including the committee members, NASBE, which is the National Association of State Boards of Education, and everyone who worked on the report. The State Board looks forward to hosting more engaging events and discussions in 2024. Thank you to the SBOE staff for all of your hard work to ensure this evening was a success. Over the last month, the State Board has met with Chairman Mendelson to share our agency budget requests and updates to work in old council chambers, which we are in now. We also met with OSI to lay out a path forward for the approval of the DC report card and outline next steps for approving the financial literacy standards. This evening, the State Board will hear from eight public witnesses. We look forward to hearing from you. We, we will also hear from a panel on truancy and chronic absenteeism interventions in schools. We encourage the public to sign up every month to share testimony. As a reminder, signup closes 48 hours before every public meeting, and the link can be found at www.sboe.dc.gov. Our next public meeting of the State Board will be held on February 21st. Tonight's panelists for our expert panel will share strategies and tools that are working to curb truancy and chronic absenteeism and highlight areas where our organizations or schools are having success. We are excited to hear from Avante Benning, a student at Dunbar High School, Liz Cohen, Policy Director of Future Ed, Justin Lessick, Executive Director at the Sojourner Truth Public Charter School, and Dr. Ruston Lewis, Executive Director of Communities and Schools of the Nation's Capital. I invite each of you to come to the witness table now. As you all are transitioning, I'm gonna share a few housekeeping notes. Each of you will have up to five minutes, and then we will move to one round of questions for the State Board. We will begin with Mr. Benning. Where is Mr. Benning? Oh, it says, "Mr. in my notes." We will begin with Ms. Benning. My apologies. We will begin with you. And you are welcome to start when you're, when you're ready. I would encourage you to speak into the mic. We may be able to hear you in the chambers, but because the meeting is broadcast, we want to make sure the people watching online can hear you as well. Ms. Benning.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for your acknowledgement of this ongoing issue regarding excessive absenteeism in our schools. I hope to provide more insight from a student's perspective so we can resolve this problem together. My name is Avanti Benning. I'm a senior at Dunbar High School and the Student Government President. Recently, my colleagues and I put together a survey assessing the needs of students within their school. Communication between staff and students was a top-five area of concern. This holds significance as these communication challenges may contribute to the attendance issues that have been reported. When students are aware of the proper ways to communicate, they can feel, when students are unaware of the proper ways to communicate, they can feel uncomfortable in doing so and won't understand the importance of communication. When we are unsure of how to communicate our emotions, some of us may become defensive, stubborn, and apathetic. This creates tension and can prevent school from being the safe space it's supposed to be mentally and physically. When students are asked about their reluctance to attend school, they commonly express a preference for alternative settings. Reasons include a desire to avoid the school environment, a belief that they can complete their assignments at home, or a simple lack of motivation. Students generally favor environments that foster comfort over those perceived as disruptive. The question is, what makes the school environment so disruptive and how does this contribute to excessive absenteeism? Imagine you are a student and your school has a no-phone policy during class, but also a no-movement during the first and last 15 minutes of class. You receive an urgent text from your mom and your teacher grants permission for you to step out and call your mother during the first 15 minutes of class. While you're in the hallway, a dean demands you go back to class because there should be no movement. You try to explain that you're speaking with your mom on an urgent matter, but that dean is adamant about your returning to class. Conflict strikes. The frustration from this interaction causes you to disengage for the rest of the day. You're not in the mood to talk or do work because all you can think about is how unfair it is that your teacher gave you permission to do one thing, but your dean obliged you to do another. The next day comes around and you decide not to go to school to avoid a similar situation unfolding. This all would have been avoided with an effort to be understanding and positive communication. The dean is trying to do their job of making sure everyone is abiding by the rules, and you, the student, wanted to respect the classroom by stepping out to take your call. If the student would have had a pass to be in the hallway, and if the dean took the time to listen to your reasoning, the dean could have heard you out and reminded you to bring a pass next time. You would have been able to go about your call, keeping in mind the 15-minute rule. Situations like these take place in school daily and continue to escalate into something chaotic and uncalled-for. If we all did our part by taking time to develop positive communication and listening skills, the school environment would feel more like a receptive place than an emotionally disruptive one. The common goal is to put an end to chronic absenteeism, and by doing so, we need to foster a positive and inclusive school climate where students feel valued and supported. School is a community within itself, and the staff are our community leaders, the ones giving students the foundation to academically successful lives. We should be training our students not only academically, but logically, emotionally, and realistically. To illustrate, I believe the implementation of a communication development course for staff will establish communication skills that will spread throughout the school environment, encouraging students to adapt these same skills. This is one of many ways we can demolish excessive absenteeism by creating an atmosphere where students experience a sense of welcoming, understanding, and acknowledgement within their own environment. We strive not only to improve attendance rates, but to build a culture and community that uplifts and support each other. Thank you for allowing me to testify, and please feel free to ask any questions. Thank you again.
Thank you for inviting me to testify today. My name is Liz Cohen. I'm the Policy Director at Future Ed, a research center at the Georgetown University McCourt School of Public Policy focused on K-12 education, also former OSI and DCPS. So this is a little bit like a homecoming for me tonight. As of today, 36 states and DC have released their chronic absenteeism rates for the 22-23 school year. Unfortunately, of these 37 jurisdictions, DC has the highest chronic absenteeism rate for the 22-23 school year. We already know that chronic absenteeism is one of the biggest problems DC schools face. Many of you testified to this yourselves in front of City Council last month. And as I shared at that same hearing, one-third of DC schools saw their truancy rates increase during the 22-23 school year, including 49 elementary schools. Now we're five months into the current school year, and we are talking about data from last year. There's no information about what absenteeism and truancy look like right now to guide policy, practice, or resource allocation. So if I leave you with one idea from my testimony today, I hope it is that more timely public data on absenteeism is an important policy adjustment that will greatly help the district address this serious problem. At a minimum, this should mean an up-to-date dashboard available to city leaders, OSI, the Deputy Mayor, State Board, and the Mayor's Office. Ideally, this could mean a public-facing dashboard, like the one developed by Rhode Island, that shows current absenteeism and truancy data for every school in the state, updated daily directly from school and district data systems. When it comes to solutions, most of what works boils down to this: relationships and information. So both parents and students need trusting relationships in the school building, as we just heard about, and parents need information to understand the true costs of absenteeism. So I've mentioned more timely data as a priority, but I want to stress it again. We can't solve a problem when we don't know if what we're trying is working. So one place where the State Board of Education, City Council, the Deputy Mayor, and others in the district could potentially work together is to try to answer the very fundamental question of why absenteeism rates remain so troublingly high. We can't solve a problem when we don't understand its root cause. We can hypothesize many things, but it would behoove the district to talk to parents and students across the city in informal and informal ways to understand why school attendance behaviors have changed so much since the pandemic. Right now, schools are spending huge amounts of time, emotion, and resources trying to improve attendance. I've sat in school attendance meetings. I've talked to principals across DC about absenteeism. But what seems to be missing is a city-wide strategy that would relieve some of the burden currently carried alone by each school. So when we talk about the importance of relationships, about parents and students needing to feel connected to school, there are some supports and resources that the city could provide. And if you haven't seen it yet, I highly recommend reading journalist Alec McGillis's January 8th story on chronic absenteeism in Detroit for what I think is one of the best narratives about what this kind of individualized relationship building can look like. But we also need to bring schools together across DCPS and the charter sector to understand what's happening and what's working. So let's take the examples of Jefferson Middle School, DCPS school, and Two Rivers Public Charter Middle School, so two middle schools. Both had a 49% truancy rate last school year. But for Jefferson, that was a rate that reflected an improvement of 14 percentage points from the previous year. Two Rivers saw their truancy rate increase by over 22 percentage points in that same timeframe. So both schools have the same truancy rate, but for very different reasons, and are thus on very different trajectories. What can these schools learn from each other, or what can we learn from them, about successes and challenges? My organization, Future Ed, has written extensively on both state and district-level solutions to attendance. Some of them, like requiring attendance teams for schools who aren't seeing an improvement in absenteeism rates, are important, but also expensive and can be challenging to implement. DC should certainly consider these ideas, and in many places, they already are or are already trying them. But also, while deliberating what to do, we can begin with some low-cost, low-effort solutions. One low-cost action is better health messaging. We believe, if Future Ed and qualitative data also back this up, that particularly at the elementary school level, parents are more likely to keep kids at home for perceived illness since the pandemic, even when in fact the child could be at school. Our partners at Attendance Works developed new health guidance with the National Association of School Nurses and Kaiser Permanente to help parents understand when they can and should send their child to school and to help teachers understand when children can and should stay in school. and should stay in school. The DC Department of Health could work with A.C. to adopt a version of this guidance for DC schools. Chronic absenteeism doesn't get fixed overnight, but there are evidence-based solutions which, paired with more rapid data and a better understanding of parent and student behaviors, should help the District of Columbia get all kids in school every day. Thanks.
Hi. Good afternoon, President Thompson and other members of and student representatives of the State Board of Education. My name is Justin Lessick and I'm the Executive Director at Sojourner Truth Public Charter School. Truth is the district's first and only public Montessori middle and high school. We're located in Ward Five, and we currently have about two-hundred-and-eighty-five students across grades six through ten. Over the next few years, we'll grow until we have closer to four-hundred-and-fifty students across grades six through twelve. We're grateful for the hard work of Board Member Henderson in Ward Five and for all of you and your support and advocacy for our schools and our students. At Truth, we were fortunate to have some of the higher attendance rates in the district last year, and I'm testifying and serving on the panel today to share some of the strategies that we used. Like most LEAs across the city, we used a multifaceted approach: a culture of inclusivity and personalized support. I believe it's critical for students to know that they are truly seen and truly cared for while they are at school, and so we work very hard to create a close-knit culture where students feel welcomed in a very authentic way. Each of our classrooms, whether at the middle school level or the high school level, and whether in a subject like math or like music, starts the day with a community circle where students take on roles as facilitators, mindful moment leaders, greeters, and more. Each student is individually and openly acknowledged by the whole group during the circle greeting and given the chance to share and be heard. Adults participate alongside students and in the same capacity. It's a comfortable way and a familial way to start the day, and it focuses on personal connections between each individual and the community. Choice and voice in curriculum and academic experience. It is a Montessori tenet to follow the child with respect to interests and avenues of exploration, and so we make room for student voice and choice in as many places as possible in our curriculum. When students are writing argumentative essays, they're encouraged to pick their topics and to argue about things they care about. When studying figurative language, they're encouraged to find it in their favorite music. We believe small things like this are an additional opportunity for personal connection, this time with the content being studied. Organizing students into small communities where no one can slip through the cracks. One advantage that Truth has is that we're still a relatively small school community. Last year, we had only two-hundred-and-fifteen students. This year, I mentioned, we have about two-hundred-and-eighty-five. This makes it a place where every single adult can know the name and interests of every single student in the building and where I, as the Executive Director, can have most of their guardians or parents' personal numbers on my cellphone. To get even more personal, we cohort our middle schoolers into what we call ecosystems that have about fifty students and four teachers each. These students spend each day with the same four teachers, and in many cases, they have them year to year. Because as a Montessori school, most of our classrooms are mixed-grade level. This means that many of last year's eighth graders were spending their third year in a row with the same core group of teachers that at this point had incredibly strong relationships with and with their families. This is even true at the high school level, where our ELA and math classes are mixed-grade level, and so many of our tenth graders are in their second year with a particular ELA or math teacher. High attendance rates and low truancy rates are a focus for all staff members and not just one specific team. Every student at Truth has a designated teacher mentor, and this mentor is the family's liaison to the school. The individual typically has a strong connection with the student family, and the mentorship sessions are both academic and social-emotional in nature. The mentor is typically the first touchpoint to a family when a student is absent or late to school, and whenever possible, seeks to understand the root cause preventing regular and on-time attendance. This is also typically the individual that's doing a home visit, which may or may not also involve a social worker or counselor. Personalized, relationship-based, and persistent support systems for students with attendance challenges. In many cases, this includes wake-up calls for mentors or our student support team. In a few cases, it even includes transportation support, where staff members pick up and drive students to get them to school on time in the morning. We have a streamlined system for early identification of students with attendance and truancy issues so that interventions can take place swiftly and so students don't fall through the cracks. This is required daily coordination between our teacher mentors, our student support team, which is our counselors and social workers, and our front-office operations team. This kind of communication and focus takes time and energy, and trade-offs can force it to pull resources from other initiatives. We have daily staff-wide text threads that share the names of all students that haven't been seen yet that day, followed by messages with efforts and follow-up and eventually next steps. It undoubtedly takes time from teachers or administrators who might otherwise be spending their energy on adjustments or feedback to lesson design or implementation, but it is an intentional trade-off. The Truth community looks forward to continued discussion and learning around best ways to improve student attendance citywide. We certainly do not have all of the answers, and while we did have strong data last year, we're facing new challenges this year and finding ourselves needing to double down on many of the strategies I mentioned. I hope for ongoing and productive collaboration citywide and approaches that support schools with resources to more effectively employ strategies that we're learning can work. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, President Thompson and Vice President Patterson and members of the committee. My name is Ruston Lewis. I'm the Executive Director of Communities and Schools of the Nation's Capital. CIS of the Nation's Capital is a DC-based affiliate of the national model communities and schools. Our mission is to surround students with a community of support to eliminate barriers to their success. Our integrated support services assist students by tackling issues like poverty, anxiety, and trauma that hinder their success in school, and most importantly, their attendance. This year, we are serving four-thousand-one-hundred students across the city in Wards One, Five, Six, Seven, and Eight through a variety of approaches such as whole-school, targeted, and case-managed initiatives. The organization's impact comes from our -- primarily comes from our partnerships, our feeder pattern, and our site coordinators. Let me just share a little more depth there. Our partnerships allow us to leverage relationships and bring in products like hygiene kits, provide mental health supports, and tutoring after school. Our feeder pattern structure allows us to work with kids from K through twelve, where we have site coordinators embedded in schools to support them throughout their matriculation. And thirdly, our site coordinators, who are integrated in the daily school, where they become a part of the culture of the school, where they build trusting relationships with their students' families, and begin to create customized interventions and provide resources, such as clothing, health services, and mentoring. To address chronic absenteeism and truancy, the coordinators employ several effective strategies. They provide incentives and recognition. So an example of that would be a principal's breakfast or a trip, field trip. They offer support and interventions for students at risk of missing school that may include tutoring and counseling. Or create a positive and engaging environment where they're building strong communication and effective, ongoing relationships with their case-managed students. These are proven strategies for us. Many students face obstacles that prevent them from attending school, such as the need to work and contribute financially or/or feelings of depression. To help students overcome these obstacles, our site coordinators provide intensive case management support. For example, we had a student, Oscar, was an eighth grader from Guatemala, who was referred to CIS for his consistent truancy. Oscar was assigned to a CIS coordinator who identified symptoms of depression during his assessment. The coordinator also discovered that Oscar needed basic needs and medical services but lacked insurance. Consequently, the CIS coordinator referred him to the Campus Department for Behavioral Health Therapist. The coordinator maintained the relationship with Oscar by conducting weekly check-ins, establishing goals to address the barriers affecting his school attendance, and enrolling him in a bilingual tutoring program. The coordinator's efforts were not limited to Oscar, but extended to his father, who required mental health and food stamp assistance. The CIS coordinator motivated the father to engage more with his son by having conversations, spending quality time with him, and learning how to support his mental health needs. Our evidence-based model leads to improved student attendance, positive behaviors, and completion of coursework. Our students have shown consistent progress over the past five years. On average, seventy percent of our -- seventy percent have improved their attendance, ninety-seven have improved behavior, seventy-eight percent have advanced academically, and ninety-five percent of our case-managed students from kindergarten to eleventh grade have been promoted from grade one grade to the next. We appreciate your service to the District of Columbia. We hope this testimony highlights how our work has been pivotal in ensuring students receive the necessary supports for success. CIS is implementing its strategies to address the persistent issues of truancy and chronic absenteeism among students in the city, which in turn will advance the success of future generations. Thank you.
I want to say thank you to our panelists. Director Butler, my mic is a little wobbly this evening. So I'm going to say thank you again to our panelists. Director Butler will now call the roll for member questions. Each member has three minutes. This is a reminder that the three minutes include both the time to ask the question and the panelists' responses, and Director Butler will assist with keeping time.
Thank you. We are going to start with our student representatives. Representative Washington.
Hi, everybody. Thank you all for coming out and for giving your testimony. I love everything that's been said and feel like communication is kind of like a really big aspect to solving truancy and kind of the gist of what everybody was saying. I had one question. It was for Ms. Bennings. I was wondering if there was anything specific that incentivizes you to go to school as a student personally, or maybe your peers or anything like that.
I'm sorry. Could you repeat the question, please?
I was wondering if there was anything that incentivizes or motivates you to go to school personally.
Honestly, what incentivizes me and motivates me to go to school is my attendance because I know that can affect my classes and if I have a certain amount, the possibility of me effing. So for instance, like today, I was going to go to school because of a two-hour delay, but I knew that I needed to have my attendance in for every one of my classes.
Thank you, and thank you all again for coming.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Representative Biaflor.
Thank you for your testimonies. My only question, I guess, I'm just wondering, how does truancy and chronic absenteeism vary across grade levels and across different demographics? Are there certain demographics that are more at risk of chronic absenteeism?
I can speak to that. We do see a difference in chronic absenteeism across grade levels when we look at the data in DC, but it also is true generally. Kindergarten and ninth grade tend to be the grades with the highest levels of absenteeism. We see some in twelfth grade, too. And then the other part of your question about the demographics is that it does tend to be more likely that students from low-income families are more likely to be chronically absent, and there's a lot of reasons why. There are sort of obstacles that poverty can put up that can get in the way of students coming to school, and part of the communication and relationship building is often understanding what's going on, like some of the stories that you heard here in the testimony.
Thank you. No other questions.
Representative Kelly.
My question is, what advice do you have for schools to work with their local community members and families to improve student attendance?
Can you please repeat that question?
My question was, what advice do you have for schools to work with their local community members and families to improve attendance?
What are the approaches that CIS is taking is that we've established community advisory boards for several of our schools, and they're both doing community engagement events, but they're also engaging parents.
Yeah, and I might just add, the word like, the concept of incentivizing has come up a fair amount, which I think is great there, and kind of motivation, which I think there can be intrinsic motivations, and then we talk about extrinsic motivations. And like a pizza party or something like that can be, you know, an extrinsic motivator that might push the needle a little bit and maybe nudge a student who wouldn't otherwise come to school to come to school. But I think it's important also to think a lot about intrinsic motivators, like reasons that I want to come to school because I'm actually, like, I want to engage in biology class today, or I'm excited about discussing this book we've been reading. And so when I think about your question, which I think is a great one, Ms. Kelly, around like advice for schools to work with local community partners, I suppose I would wonder, I would want to talk with my families and kids about what community partners they would be excited to work with. And I know there are a lot out there. Mr. Lewis, your program sounds really wonderful. To make sure that, again, it would be something that the kids would be eager to engage in and not just another thing that might try to be an extrinsic motivator that doesn't get at kind of the root issues of why they're not wanting to come to school or what might be preventing them from coming to school.
Thank you. Representative Yarkin.
Hello. Again, thank you all for your testimony. I have a question for Mr. Lessick. I really like the idea of the mentor-teachers and the relationships they can build with students. It seems like an effective way to balance, to battle chronic absenteeism. But if you were the director of a school like Jackson Reed, which serves thousands of students, and as Representative Goulet has mentioned a couple times, struggles with student-teacher ratios and overcrowding, is there a way that you could integrate these ideas, you know, outside of a school that only has two-hundred-and-eighty-five students to like easier to bring these things?
Yeah, and I thank you for that question, Mr. Yarkin. I do think that there is an advantage to being a smaller school. I know at Jackson Reed, you guys have a wonderful principal and a very creative one. I think if you were to look at some ratios, there are some advantages maybe that big schools have when it comes to a lot of resources as well, and I think there are ways within a large school to maybe compartmentalize and build smaller communities. Again, I threw out that word ecosystem before, and that is a way to take a middle school of about two-hundred kids and then we organize it into these smaller ecosystems. And I, some of these things might already be happening and probably are at Jackson Reed, but I wonder amongst, say, a, there could be a ninth-grade class with two-thousand students, but you know, you can break those into houses, and some larger schools do have the advantage of having really robust staff numbers, too, which might actually, in some cases, make their instructional staff-to-student ratio even more favorable for things like mentorship. So I do think there is an advantage that small schools have with respect to every adult knowing every student in the building, and that is becoming increasingly harder even at Truth, like as we grow. But I do think there are probably some creative ways to create smaller communities even within a larger school, and you know, smaller teacher communities, too, where you might have a group of one-hundred-and-fifty ninth graders, and maybe they all have the same biology teacher as well as the same algebra or geometry teachers, as well as the same ELA-1 teachers, so that those teachers can also meet and sort of go through a reasonable-sized roster of like, okay, well, we share these one-hundred-and-fifty students versus, you know, an enormous school with an enormous staff with an enormous number of kids who, you know, it's very difficult to find like the same biology teacher who teaches the same set of kids as an algebra teacher and an ELA-1 teacher and a world history-1 teacher.
I would just add quickly that there's also people besides teachers who can play that role and are playing that role. For instance, tutors is a great example. So there's a charter management organization called Great Oaks that's working with a handful of both charter and DCPs schools to help place AmeriCorps fellows who serve both as tutors and as mentors in schools.
Thank you. Representative Williams.
Yes. Thank you all for your testimony. I'm really impressed by the, how broad and diverse the perspectives are we have here, and I think that's really excellent for enhancing this conversation from students to school leaders to local organizations. So I just really appreciate the richness of the conversation. Ms. Bennings, I want to start with you with just naming, you know, these small interactions that you would have with a dean in the hallway on, you know, something that would be important and urgent and just wanting more understanding and not necessarily feeling like a rule is being enforced on you that doesn't make you feel connected to your school community. So I don't have a question, but I just want to highlight that because I think that's incredibly important for for building understanding and an inclusive school community that you named. Ms. Cohen, I want to underscore the, what you talked about with timely public data. I think that's critical, and whether it be the state board or working with, you know, our superintendent and Ossi or the DME, I think that's something that we need to grow urgently in. Because as you said, we can't respond immediately to practice or policy if we don't know where we stand. So, I hope that really serves as a conversation starter for how we can move forward. And also highlighting how, you know, the schools you gave Jefferson and Two Rivers could be seemingly in the same place with a statistic, but could be trending in two very different directions. And that's really important for them being responsive to particular needs of particular school communities. Mr. Lessig, you had talked about like the student support team, and I wanted to give you like 30 seconds because I also have a question for Dr. Lewis around, just kind of like on a more tactical level, what does like the communication and lift look like for people at your school with that? Because it does feel extra, but also very meaningful. And as a teacher every day, like I will sometimes, you know, text students or text families, you know, to provide those wake-up calls, and it feels like something that's necessary, but also something that is very emotionally taxing on our educators and school communities.
And just to clarify, kind of the, that student support team unit and sort of their roles and responsibilities, or how they communicate on a daily basis?
Like the communication amongst your staff and then amongst the students on a daily basis.
This is kind of making me think back to what I was talking about with Mr. Yarkin's question, too, because I do think it helps when there's a smaller cohort, because it is a lot of like in-the-moment texting, as you can probably imagine, some of which I'm looped into, given my leadership role, a lot of which I'm not looped into. But there is quite a bit of communication, whether it's via phones, and I imagine some of the educators in the building, this will resonate with. But like, yes, as simple as like so-and-so is not in my classroom right now, and I'm not sure where they are, or this person has been gone for quite a while, or something like that.
I'm going to cut you off just to draw some conclusions. I'm sorry that I'm not able to ask you a couple of questions, Dr. Lewis, but I'd love to follow up with you offline and really appreciate the focus on like an integrated support system and the work that your organization is doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Representative Henderson.
I'm proud to be associated by ward with Ms. Bennings and Mr. Lessig. Thank you for your testimony. You represent two pretty different schools in Truth and Dunbar. One of the differences being size, so I wanted to ask the questions that Representative Yarkin asked of you, Mr. Lessig. But on the flip side, Ms. Bennings, can you, do you have or can you imagine like smaller pockets of community at Dunbar that might, might offer that more personal community, more relationships, whether it would be your academy or your grade? Like, could you envision like a smaller community there even in a larger school?
I could imagine and envision smaller communities at Dunbar and how that would benefit us. And we somewhat have those, because even though we are large-sized, so everything we're going to do, everything we do is going to be large. For example, the academies that we do have, I've noticed that they do build that sense of community and relationship between staff and students. So, if there was a way that we could have more of that, then I feel like that would really benefit us and change some things and contribute to attendance. Because, for example, the academy that I am in, the Black Studies Academy, if I know that my academy is having an event during lunch on a certain day, I'm going to make sure that I'm in school, and I'm sure that the same thing goes for the other academies that we have as well. So, if we could have something similar, but even like smaller, I feel like that would really benefit us as well.
Thank you. Ms. Cohen, I've done a little bit of that informal, just like trying to gather data. And what I've heard a lot about from students is that they're caring for other family members, whether it's younger siblings or older family members. The other two big issues that seem to come up are transportation and safety on the way to and from school. And that didn't necessarily come out in the testimony today, but does that resonate like kind of more broadly? I've had a pretty small sample size and who I've talked to so far.
Yeah, I think you're totally right. And both of those are really big issues. I think on the transportation and safety, I mean, I know for sure, and I've been in schools particularly in Ward Eight, where I know the school leaders will say, I mean, parents will keep their kids home after incidents of violence, and the students themselves. I mean, I've spent a lot, I'm in the middle of writing a report about high schools in DC, so I've been spending a lot of time in high schools. And the students themselves will say, will talk about how unsafe they feel traveling. And I do think that that is something, but I think both of those issues, the safety, but also this issue of caring for others is partly why, to really address chronic absenteeism, it has to be all hands on deck. It can't just be the education infrastructure of this city, as rich and varied as it is. It has to be everybody, because schools can't provide childcare for younger siblings or older adults. And schools can't solve the community violence problem either.
Totally agree, thank you.
Representative Bollier.
The report card came out in December and said that chronic attendance is more than a problem. And it's chronic. I don't know how many people in the community understand what that means as far as chronic attendance. It means that a student has missed more than 18 days of the school year. 10% of 180. Even I can do that math. But what's being done about it? This is a chronic problem. If you had a chronic disease, you wouldn't just sit and hope for it to go away. And what I don't understand, and all of your, I've got questions for everybody, but I don't have any time. Because I know that when we did restorative justice at Codozo my last year, we had restorative circles every day in classes. We monitored everyone's attendance. We had fabulous, these were seniors. We had fabulous attendance, because there were people calling the houses, talking to the parents. The students came to groups and things like that. And it doesn't matter about the size of a school, all right? We know that Jackson Reed is huger, I know that's not a real word, but than your school. But the thing about it is, is everyone in the building should be working for the same thing. We're dealing with a school system nationally that's about 150 years old and hasn't been changed as far as the structure of the school. We're in a chronic emergency as far as it. And the truancy and attendance problem is something that involves everyone in that school. I'll stop. What can we do to get the word out? The report card came out and said it's there. But the mayor needs to understand that this is an emergency and that things have to be changed in order for it to happen.
I think, I'll just say that, I think that tying absenteeism to everything that's being done, right? I think DC is doing a lot of work at the high school level. There's a lot of innovation. That's going to hopefully give kids more reason to stay in school, to come to school. We need to make sure that we're offering value to students so that students like Ms. Bennings know why they're coming to school every day. And if we're not meaning that, we need to talk about it. But to go back to Mr. Villaflor's question, I would just say that, I mean, 30% of ninth-grade students missed more than 30% of school last year. So, it's chronic across grades, but it's also particularly problematic at some of the most important times in a student's life.
Thank you.
Thank you. Representative Reed.
Good evening, thanks for coming to this meeting, and thanks to a few of you who previously testified. I like to hang out in schools as much as possible or as much as I can. So, I was hanging out in Baloo right before Christmas holiday. And one of the students who was saying like, oh, we're in school, we're just not in class. And I'm paraphrasing, she gave it to me very straight. So, I'm curious about, do you know any of the impact on the numbers, if that is the case? I do know there's also students who may not be actually physically coming to school, but I found that interesting to hear from students, because I remember being a high school student and doing exactly that. So, any thoughts about that part? Is it impacting our numbers? And then any solutions or thoughts related to, could some attendance issues be happening even within buildings?
It's definitely impacting the numbers, because those students are counting as absent. I also love spending time in schools, and I've also spent time at Baloo. Baloo is having a particular problem with in-school absence, which is a weird thing to say. But they have a lot of students who are swiping in in their security system and then never attending their classes, and they're all being marked absent. Now, I would argue they are absent because they are not in-class learning. And so, I'm glad that they feel that school is a safe place. I know the principal and the entire administration team and the attendance counselors are really trying to figure out what to do about this particular issue. And some of it is culture, and there's a new principal this year, and I know they're working on it. But I don't know if it's wider than Baloo, I know it's a very big problem at Baloo.
And I think it's a good time to turn over to our Dunbar student. What do you know about this issue? Is it even an issue?
I do feel like it's a big issue, but what comes to mind is kind of being asked, like, what would you rather do instead? I don't think anybody really asks that. And for example, if somebody were to ask me, what would I rather be doing if I'm not in class, but I'm in school? Me personally, I would rather have independent learning time. Because if I'm going to a class, but I'm like, oh, I didn't do that assignment last night, and I might get backlash for it in class, I'd rather just have a time to work on it independently or separately. So, asking students like, what is it that'll keep you engaged? Maybe if a student has a certain area of space that they go to where they're completing their work but not being in class. Or if students like to wander the building, maybe you can do some school beautification, something that keeps you going, but where you're also learning and engaged. So, you're not just in school just to be in school for your attendance, but in school for a specific reason.
Yeah, and I raised that because I remember, I was sharing, actually Representative Henderson, my second period was attendance period, it was Italian, and I would skip it, and I'll be in my student government class. But if you looked at my report card, it said that I was not in school, not learning. However, I was engaged in something. So, I'm wondering how we can exactly do, work with students that way. Thank you.
Thank you. Representative Goulet.
I'd just like to thank you all for coming out tonight and for each having a different perspective and solution on this. You know, we, I was able to be fortunate enough to sit through the council's hearing on this issue and testify at that as well. You know, and it really does sound like, as you said, we need an all-hands-on-deck approach on this. And each of the different perspectives and solutions you're bringing to it, I think are really helpful. You know, my testimony, I centered around just a few issues there. You know, one was the issue of trying to find out-of-school time programming. That's something this board has adopted a resolution for universal out-of-school time programming. I think that would be really important. I mean, just giving each kid from 3:30 to 6 o'clock, something that, you know, lights a fire in their eyes in the morning. They want to get up, they want to go to school, so they can then attend that out-of-school time program. And it could be sports, it could be like a career path that they see, music, arts, I mean, whatever. And we may find out if we ask the kids things that we haven't even thought of. So, that's one thing I talked about. And then the issue of safe patches to school. I did hear a lot of concerns from students about trying to get to and from school safely, dealing with bullying issues potentially at the school as being deterrents. And, you know, and I think we all should be very mindful of these metro cuts that we potentially see on the horizon, because a lot of kids do take public transit to and from school, and that alarms me. But, you know, what I want to kind of focus on is what we can do, you know, on our board side to help with the solution. Our Ward Two representative, Representative Chang, mentioned, you know, one of our committee meetings, you know, that our focus should be on kind of create, within our power here, an engaging curriculum that really kind of energizes students during the school day for things they would want to do. So, do you have any suggestions on ways we could start to restructure our curriculum in certain areas to capture some of these students who may not be, you know, interested in, you know, what we're offering right now, per se? So, I'll open it up to anybody who wants to talk on that. So, curriculum changes that you might recommend?
Well, I think that academics is certainly extremely important in order for our students to advance and do well. But I also think that there are students who are able to take advantage of onsite workforce learning and how you integrate additional work opportunities, whether it's, you know, developing skills at copper cabling or whatever that may be, sort of align someone directly with the workforce versus the academic track. I'm not saying one is more important than the other, I think we need to have both available to students.
Thank you, I definitely agree on that.
The conversation that Bennings and Reed, Representative Reed, that you guys were having also had me thinking, like, those are two situations where you guys wanted to do stuff, and there were these constraints in place that sort of frustrated you, left you feeling probably you weren't being dignified. We still have this, this system of like Carnegie seat hour units. And, you know, there are more progressive ways to give kids units and keep expectations high.
Thank you, I appreciate it very much.
Representative Best.
So, I think between all of the testimonies that we've heard, I think we have the answers, right? So, it's like integrating student voice, school culture, relationships, and community support. But most importantly, I think we have to continue to find a way to make school fun and meaningful. So, like we just heard, if students have to ask, why am I going to school, then I think we failed. I do have one question, and it's going to be from Ms. Bennings. Thank you again for showing up. I believe that there are lots of unintended consequences to well-meaning legislation or at-school rules. So, I believe that the rules, some of the rules that you mentioned, might have been made with like the best intentions. Unfortunately, I don't think that our schools often work with our students enough when creating these rules. So, my question is, what advice would you have for schools as they start to think of new policies that they might add to some of the challenges that you see?
A suggestion that I would add would essentially just be getting the students' voice. I feel like at Dunbar, a lot has shifted my senior, my senior year in comparison to my 10th-grade year with the incorporation of just student voice, period. Like, they try to include students in every single small thing that they do. And I feel like if we do that, but even on a more organized level, because it's our first year having student government, and if we just do this across every school system, make sure you're going to the students first before going to another adult. Like, we're in school, they're right there. So, I would say that, like, that would be a quick way, but an effective way to just solve a lot of the issues, because you're hearing it directly from the source and the suggestions. And in return, you're even teaching students, you know, like how to advocate for themselves and why something might work and why something might not work, which also goes into building those relationships, because you're communicating with your students, and you're having a conversation with them, and you're making them feel like they're included, and you're also teaching them life lessons. So, just to incorporate students in everything that you do.
I love that, students first. No further questions.
Thank you. Representative Chang.
Great, yes, thank you. So, earlier today, I spoke with a high school teacher whose biggest frustration that she was explaining to me is that her students can't read. They can't do their homework, and so they aren't engaging in class. And she reminded me how students who can't read are more likely to be disengaged in class and less likely to be enthusiastic about attending school. Right now, only 26% of our fourth graders in DC performed at or above the NAAP Exam in reading for proficiency, which means 74% of DC students are not reading proficiently by fourth grade. And what she was reminding me is how disengaging it is for this 74% of DC students to show up every day unable to follow along with what is actually happening in class. And that is the reality for too many of our students. I say this to remind us that the challenges that we're facing around absenteeism can't be diagnosed or solved in a vacuum, which I know all of you in the audience know. And I understand that interventions like home visits, health messaging, make incremental improvements as point solutions. But I do have to name that we're all observing something much bigger, right? In our conversations with teachers and with students. And so, my question to you, Ms. Cohen, as the researcher on the panel, to what extent are researchers taking note of this reality, right? That more and more students no longer find school to be engaging or relevant?
Well, I think everyone's taking note. I think we're trying to actively understand. I mean, it sounds a little bit like lip service to say that we're trying to understand how these behaviors have suddenly shifted in the last couple of years. But that is kind of what's happening. And again, I mean, to go back to something I brought up earlier, I will say that, I mean, I'm very, both excited and bullish on the promise of tutoring specifically as a solution that addresses so much of what you were just talking about and what we've all been talking about today. Because what we're really saying is that, and what the work of everyone on this panel, right, is that we need more adults to approach, to have relationships with our kids in this city and in every city and town in America, right? We need adults to care about kids so that kids know that there is someone at school who sees them for who they are. That adult doesn't have to be a licensed educator, it can be a tutor. It could even be a tutor who they're meeting with virtually on a computer. I actually have a report coming out next week on tutoring. I've spent a lot this year going across the country and watching students have real relationships and then them telling their teachers, this is why I came to school today, because I know I have my tutoring session with a kid who's in college in Kentucky and this is a thing. And so we know that there are solutions on the table that can both address the fact that we need kids to learn how to read and we want them to come to school because they know someone cares about them.
Vice President Patterson.
Thank you. Thank each one of you for being here this evening for this subject. I'm fortunate to have a friend and a board, and a member from my ward, Ward Eight, who is a strong advocate for special needs children. And I think we've kind of overlooked that a lot of the times when we're talking about this. So I have a question in regards to her advocacy. Have you looked at the data for chronic absenteeism in regards to children with disabilities? And what has that data shown you? And what advice could you give us to make sure that we're keeping that at the forefront, that we're doing and supporting those students as best we can? And I'll ask Ms. Cohen and Mr. Lewis to really address that issue for me because you guys are researchers at school and community and schools.
We certainly see that students with disabilities do tend to have a higher absenteeism rate, probably for a lot of reasons. I think, you know, I'll defer to Mr. Lewis to really talk about solutions. But again, I think that as we're thinking about what are the offerings, what is the curricular offerings, the academic offerings, the programs within programs within schools? And how do we make sure that those are available and accessible to all students, including students with disabilities whenever and wherever possible, is certainly something to keep in front of mind.
Thank you for your question. I think that CIS has been effective in addressing not just students with disabilities, but all students by developing those custom, those relationships, one-on-one, trust-building, and then an action plan that reflects the needs of that particular student. I think that's what's working for CIS. What's that particular student's needs and how do we address that student? So we're not taking them out of a pool, but directly addressing their needs.
Thank you.
President Thompson.
Thank you all. I really appreciate all of what you all lifted up today. The thing that I wrote down was that it is both relationships and it is information that we need to be cultivating in order to tackle this chronic problem. And so I think my question would be to Mr. Lewis first. If you could talk about, like, CIS is very much about caring adults and putting those relationships in place. What would it look like and what would it take to systematize that, not just in one school, but across more of our schools?
Very good question. We're in the process of trying to figure out how to do just that now, President. One of the challenges we have is having enough, have enough site coordinators that are on the ground in each school. So for example, our site coordinators case manage 10% of the school population. We have a presence at Eastern, they have roughly approximately 900 students. So our case manager is only able to manage, you know, 90 students, which is an incredible amount of students to manage for one person. So we've had to add more staff there. So that's probably the first strategy, is figuring out how we can not lose quality of our work, not lose that personal relationship, but still serve more students that need our programming.
I really, I really appreciate that. I will take my last roughly 80 seconds to say that one of the reasons we had this panel today is in hopes of starting to actually codify some of the solutions. And so I very much appreciate you showing up and lifting up your voices and saying, like, as a student, this is what works for me. You know, as a researcher, this is what we're seeing. As someone who runs a school, these are the places we can support. And these are the places that you can take burdens off of my shoulders. And of course, as a partner, the things that you are doing with communities and schools to be able to start to take that burden off of our school systems. My hope and plan is that we, as a board, then take a step, much like we did with student safety, and start to outline the recommendations to be able to share them. Because the problem is very well documented that it is a problem. It might not be real-time data yet and I think that is an awesome goal for us to have. But we can also have some real-time solutions. So I really very much appreciate your expertise today. I look forward to working with you all and the members to tackling this problem together. And I will yield the rest of my time as we start to transition. Thank you.
Thank you all for your testimony this evening. This will conclude the public meeting panel portion of our agenda. Thank you.
As we transition, our agenda is a little bit, it's not out of order, it's out of order on purpose, but it is a little bit different this evening. Typically, we have remarks from the superintendent at the top of the meeting. And so we are a little bit later in the meeting, but we will have remarks nonetheless. And so I do want to thank State Superintendent Dr. Christina Grant for joining us and welcome her remarks.
Oh, thank you so much, President Thompson. And it's a good reason, it's hard to talk about absenteeism and be late, but I was with the District of Columbia Public Schools. The chancellor and his team launched their capital commitment this evening. It's their 2023 through 2028 strategic plan. And so when you leave this evening, feel free to go visit their website and learn more about the commitments that they're making to our students. Good evening once again, President Thompson and Vice President Patterson. Congratulations, dear sir, congratulations, Board, on your successful election this evening. Happy New Year and happy new Board. Dr. O'Leary, from day one, you have been instrumental to my leadership and my success. And so I hope you continue to use my phone number and thank you so much for your service. You are truly responsible for a lot of the great work I get to accomplish and that OSI gets to accomplish. And so I love the spirit. Welcome home, welcome back, Liv. It is so good to have you with us this evening. I love, students go to college, they come home and they are testifying at a board meeting. So I hope you all who are here tonight, this stays with you and it means a lot when our students can go to great, great universities. I do think that Liv brought the weather with her home, however, because those New England temperatures are meeting us down here in the district. As always, I am grateful to be before you to share some updates on some of our priorities. And again, thank you so much for allowing me to shift your agenda. I will begin talking about the DC Report Card. After amending our SS State Accountability Plan and gaining approval from the United States Department of Education, OSI and our state board, we've engaged in multi-month public engagement sessions to provide feedback and the categories and the format of the DC School Report Card. The Report Card is a public-facing document that is required under federal law to provide our parents and our communities information on school-level performance in a format that is easily understandable and it includes school-level data on accountability metrics that are found within our approved state plan. We may also and will include additional information that we believe that the public should have available and that it's valuable information about the progress of schools in DC. Through our engagement, we've heard that parents and community members value the information that we currently have on the Report Card, particularly around academic growth and achievement. This was truly welcomed feedback as it aligned with our updated state plan, which places greatest weight on these two metrics. In addition, the public identified a few categories of information that would be valuable additions to the Report Card. The four highest potential additions were school climate data, teacher retention data, student-to-teacher ratios, and a more detailed programming and course offering information. So your ability to see which high schools are offering AP classes versus which ones have robust CTE programming. OSI listened closely to that feedback and we are proposing to the state board to add these four categories of information to the DC School Report Card. In addition, we are proposing greater contextualization in the Report Card's format. We look forward to an up-or-down vote on our proposed enhancements at next month's public meeting and moving forward with the new business, including reimagining the district's graduation requirements, addressing absenteeism, as we had a robust discussion this evening, and receiving feedback on our financial literacy standards. It was apropos to join during the robust panel conversation. I really enjoyed listening, particularly from our students, the twists and turns. I am like you, oh, well, she's not here, but Representative, oh, Representative Reed, you are sitting there. I very much was a high schooler that voted with my feet and appreciated a student saying that I too would have gone and sat in the library and done independent study if I had an option. And so I do think our students are always the individuals who have the best solutions to challenges. It's an incredible topic for OSI and the district, one that we've included in our three-year strategic plan and that we have recently discussed with DC Council. While absenteeism improved this past school year, our raw absence numbers are still far too high. With chronic absenteeism, 13 percentage points higher than prior to the pandemic and chronic truancy, seven percentage points higher than pre-pandemic figures. I look forward to additional conversations with district stakeholders on this important topic. There are no easy solutions, as we heard this evening, but with collective and concerted efforts, we can create policies and student learning environments that foster conditions that continue to improve student attendance. As the board knows, in the fall, we drafted the district's first set of statewide financial literacy standards. Public comment on these standards was opened from November 15th to January 10th and we also held multiple focus groups with district teachers, students, and residents to inform and review the proposed standards. We are currently reviewing all of the public comments and feedback received on the draft standards and we look forward to presenting an updated draft to the state board at the working session in February. OSI, with experts from Castle and Edusolve, also drafted the first set of social-emotional learning standards this fall. These standards, which encompass the knowledge and skills necessary for students and staff to establish and maintain positive relationships and emotional connections inside and outside of school, were released for public comment on December 15th and remain open for public feedback through January 22nd. For those counting at home, January 22nd is a Monday, so I encourage anyone with an interest in social-emotional learning to set aside a couple of hours to read the draft standards and submit your thoughts on what you would like and how you believe the standards should be improved. In addition, the past few months at OSI, we've been engaging relevant stakeholders, including President Thompson, district agencies, and student advocates to update the DC Environmental Literacy Plan. A draft of the updated plan is under review and we look forward to sharing it first with you, President Thompson, soon. Relatedly, I see that the state board is taking up an environmental resolution this evening at the urging of district high school students. While OSI does not have a position on the resolution itself, I will say it is extremely heartwarming to see our students take on the role of change makers, your organizational skills, your advocacy skills, your passion. When I walked in, I was like, the media's here and they're like, they're here for the students. I said, oh, okay. Are a great example of why we prioritize civic engagement and environmental literacy in our new social studies standards. Extremely well done, all of you. Your agenda this evening also includes a resolution to encourage high school students to register to vote. I am excited to see the board aim to register every high school student and to lead the nation in voter registration. At the White House earlier today, and it's always sobering when you're in the White House as a city that should be a state and you critically understand the importance of voting when you name that, when you sit between your colleagues that are governors or state leaders and right here in our nation's capital, the importance of voting is so important. And so thank you all for leading this. These are worthy goals. As we witnessed in Iowa this week, the stakes for electoral outcomes can be extremely high and registering to vote is the first step. I registered to vote in high school. I hope that every single one of you registers to vote as well. And you think about the first vote you get to take when you turn 18. In Iowa, a state of over 3.2 million people, there are more than 750,000 registered Republicans, yet just over 100,000 voters participated in the Republican caucus. I share this only to say that I hope our young people are also taking the next step and turning out to vote after they register. That's all of my political commentary for this evening. Thank you so much for your time, your attendance, and your flexibility, President Thompson and Vice President Patterson. I look forward to our first meeting together. While we face many challenges, I'm hopeful that our collective efforts and our common purpose will lead us in a stronger, brighter direction in 2024. Happy New Year, everyone.
Happy New Year, Dr. Grant. We're going to thank Dr. Grant for joining us and we, of course, appreciate OSI's continued partnership on so many policy issues. We are now going to go to recess for five minutes before we get back to public comment. So by my clock, it's 6:56, five minutes, which means we should be back here at 7:01. So I will see you soon. So I will see you soon. This is a 30-second warning that we are reconvening. 30 seconds. All right, I'm looking at the members to approach the dais so we can start public comment. We hear testimony from public witnesses at every public meeting, and your comments become part of our official record. If you would like to speak at a future public meeting, please sign up on our website at sboe.dc.gov or contact our staff by email at sboe@dc.gov or by phone at 202-741-0888. Tonight, we have eight public witnesses and many more supporters in the gallery who submitted public testimony. We will hear from those in attendance in a panel format, and you will be broken up into probably two groups. Each witness will have up to three minutes to provide comments. Please note that you must use the microphone at the table, which is already on. The timer light will be green for the first 2 and 1/2 minutes, yellow for the last 30 seconds, and red after three minutes have lapsed. After our public witnesses speak, we will pause for questions from board members. Members will have three minutes for questions for our public witnesses, and of course, those three minutes include their question, comment, and their answer. Director Butler will call the public witnesses and announce the question rounds. She will also assist with timing to ensure our witnesses and board members stay within their allotted time. Director Butler, please ask the public witnesses to come to the table. Good evening. Will the following public witnesses please come forward? Leigh Bernstein, Yasmin Fadi, Anna Mayer, and Zoe Fisher. We will start with Leigh.
Hello, members of the board. My name is Leigh Bernstein, and I serve two terms as a student rep on the board. I spoke about this at the July working session, and I'm excited to talk to you all today about the use of restraint and seclusion in school discipline measures in DC. I'll start by defining a few things. First, seclusion means involuntary confinement of a student in a room from which a student is physically prevented from leaving, so locked in. Seclusion does not include exclusionary timeouts. Life-threatening physical restraint means any physical restraint or hold of a person that restricts the flow of air into a person's lung or mobilizes or reduces the free movement of a person's arms, legs, or head while the person is in the prone position. Mechanical restraint refers to restraint using any type of machine or physical object. Some background: In school year 1112, restraint and seclusion were used at least 267,000 times nationwide. That includes 163,000 instances in which students were restrained. Mechanical restraints were used 7,600 of those times. Schools reported that they placed children in seclusion rooms about 104,000 times. In 75% of those cases, it was kids with a disability who were strained or secluded. A report published by Disability Rights DC found the following: Across the nation, students served by IDEA, made up to 12% of the population, and represented 67% of those who were subjected to restraint or seclusion. These students accounted for 75% of those who experienced physical restraint and 58% of those who were subjected to seclusion. DC currently has no regulations relating to the use of restraint and seclusion. All they say is that it should only be used as a last resort, but that's very vague terms. Restraint and seclusion are two tactics that are physically and mentally violent and are disproportionately used against boys and students with disabilities and can also be put in IEPs as a regularly-used response method. Federal regulations exist to protect students with disability from discriminatory practices. I've summarized those in the document I shared with you. And while these regulations exist, they are more concerned with the fair application of discipline across ability or disability as opposed to many restrictions regarding specific forms of punishment. DC has prohibited the use of corporal punishment, but because we have yet to eliminate restraint and seclusion from our schools, the impact of it still widely exists. The regulation around corporal punishment says essentially that the nature and amount of physical contact reasonably necessary for self-defense or maintaining order is okay, but again, is like very vaguely defined. There's no kind of metric to measure if it is okay or not. I recommend that the State Board of Education explores ways to create these regulations in the district and push both ASI and the council to adopt regulations that end the use of mechanical restraint and eliminate seclusion and find ways to mostly eliminate restraint. Students with disabilities are often forced to endure horrific conditions on a regular basis, and the fact that the data here is extremely limited and that incidences are extremely limited, which are summarized in the document that I shared with you, but I don't have time for, should be of concern for everyone on the dais today. DCPS needs to be more accountable for the way that they share information about this, but also, they shouldn't put the onus on teachers who are not trained and how to respond to kind of like these situations to figure it out for themselves and figure out how to use better methods. They should be kind of forwarding those resources themselves.
Good evening. My name is Yasmin Fotsi. I'm a sophomore at Jackson Reed High School, which I'll be referring to as the ASU at my school. I'm testifying against the Jackson Reed administration, specifically our principal, Saw Brown, for censoring the ASU regarding Palestinian-related activities repeatedly in the past few months. The ASU attempted to organize a documentary screening titled "The Occupation of the American Mind", a movie discussing the bias in Western media that favors Israeli propaganda. We did this in order to start a much-needed discussion about what is happening in Palestine, which has been avoided by the school. When that was shut down by our principal, along with numerous other movie proposals, we suggested a Palestinian culture night, only to be shut down again. When asked for an explanation from our principal, Mr. Brown, we were told to follow unjustified, unwritten, and unclear policies. The excuses given by Mr. Brown were not backed up with any rules or written regulations set in place by DCPS or the school. These regulations are given specifically to the ASU and not any other clubs. We, as students, need to all be treated the same with the same regulations to abide by. Additionally, these are extracurricular activities at our school that are not mandatory for any students to participate in. And it seems quite concerning that Principal Brown needs to get approval from the downtown DCPS office, which he indicated in the meeting with our parents and Jackson Reed alumni in order for us to screen a film. We have been repeatedly shot down, targeted, and demeaned by the Jackson Reed administration. While the school is constantly concerned with how the environment is for the Jewish students at the school, there's a lack of attentiveness towards making an environment that is safe and supportive for Arab students. Of course, we care about the safety and well-being of our fellow Jewish students, which is why we informed the Jewish Student Union, club sponsor, and two presidents about the documentary screening and the Palestinian culture night. And there was no objection. In fact, they welcomed the event. There should be a heightened amount of attentiveness right now for the Arab and specifically Palestinian students at the school because of the over 25,000 people murdered, half of which are children in Palestine by Israel. These are children who look like me and other Arab students at the school. Their students at the school have lost several family members in Palestine, and there is no concern whatsoever as to how they feel. All the discussions are centered around antisemitism. There is no place for students who have experienced these losses to go in the school to feel comfortable, safe, and supported. As a Palestinian-American, I have never seen my culture or background spoken about or acknowledged at my school. It makes me and other Palestinian students feel as if our culture causes harm and should not be celebrated. It fosters an uninclusive environment that completely ignores what we are going through. The whole point of a school and educational environment is to create a welcoming environment for all students, not just the students that they think are worthy of a welcoming environment. Our constitutional First Amendment rights to free speech are being violated. Again, we are being censored, and we will not be silenced.
First, I just want to say thank you for coming and speaking about that, and I really commend that. Yes, thank you. Good afternoon, good evening, members of the board. My name is Anna Mayer, and I'm a student at School Without Walls, as well as a leader in the Sunrise Movement advocating for the Green New Deal for Schools. I hope you remember me, as I've kept my original promise and return to every public school board meeting since we introduced our resolution. Tonight, only two months later, you will vote on it. At the last public meeting, you emphasized how notable it was that we doubled our numbers in only a month. I am incredibly proud to say that we have continued that trend, this time returning with more than double attendance of over 50 people in the crowd. I hope that you can look at all of those people sitting behind us and understand that this resolution is what DC wants and needs. I, along with everyone who came with us tonight, hope to leave this building able to say that we became the second school district in the nation to adopt a Green New Deal for Schools resolution. I sincerely hope that you share that same conviction. I'd now like to turn it over to Zoe.
First, I'd like to second what Anna said in thanking you for coming out and speaking tonight. Good evening. I'm Zoe Fisher, another student at School Without Walls and a leader in the Sunrise Movement, and most importantly, an advocate for the Green New Deal for Schools. We hope that this group of students, teachers, parents, and community members from across the city show you the vast support for this resolution. We are all thrilled to see a resolution of this nature up for a vote tonight, and we thank you for all that you have done to help us get to where we are today, specifically to Leila, Jen, and Kathleen, along with the representatives Chang, Gule, Reed, Thompson, and truly every single person in front of me tonight. And we thank you for helping us as we begin to work with the city council and then the mayor's office to bring this resolution into fruition. This is truly the first step, but it's a crucial one, and we thank you for all you have done. We said we would not stop coming to these meetings until you passed our resolution, and we will not stop working until our demand is implemented in every single DCPS school. Thank you for listening and supporting us these past few months, tonight and beyond, as we turn this resolution into action.
Thank you. Now, we will call for a round of member questions. We will start with our student representatives. Representative Washington.
Hi, everyone. I don't have any questions. I just had a few comments. I really just wanted to say thank you to each of you personally. Ms. Fadi, thank you so much for testifying. I really commend your advocacy and testifying against your administration. I'm sorry that you had to go through all of that, but I really do appreciate you for still trying to push for your culture at your school. For Ms. Mayer and Ms. Fisher, thank you all for coming back, meeting after meeting. I'm excited to see your resolution go through tonight. So yeah, I'm really grateful to see you all here again. And for Ms. Bernstein, I'm super excited to see you back, and I really do thank you for coming to testify on this issue. It would be great if we could get more data on the issue that you brought up and maybe even a resolution on it, really just push for those regulations. So thank you all.
Representative Beaflora.
I don't think I have any questions either, but a few comments. I do appreciate y'all coming back every public meeting for the Sunrise Movement. It definitely adds a lot of emphasis to your movement. And I definitely agree with Ms. Fadi that the cultural representation in schools is very important and that recognition of the diversity is important. And for Ms. Bernstein, I think that regulations for disciplinary action is definitely a big oversight in DC, and that definitely should be addressed. I will leave my last time. Is there any additional comments that any of you have?
If no one else has any, I'd like to take this time to give a specific example. In 2016, River Terrace Education Program, and this is just an example, and it's in the document that I sent you or that y'all have, had an incident where they restrained a student with an intellectual disability. They were told that they pulled the student's hair, ripped her jacket, punched her face, sent her to urgent care essentially, where she was examined for injuries and found that there were a few. They initiated an incident report, but none of the information on the report indicated anything about a use of restraint. And DCPS, when pressed on this, also did not include restraint, including the length of the restraint or descriptions of who was involved with the report, and refused to investigate it further. The central office didn't provide, like I said, any detailed account of the restraint and just explained that a student had made allegations that this has happened. I think that kind of the instance of data not being available or not having guidelines for how this data is shared is particularly troublesome and should be found troublesome. This isn't just a DCPS thing. The document that I sent also outlines abuse that happens at DC public charter schools. But yeah, I just wanted to take the time to share an example. Thank you.
I'd also like to add something to what I was saying earlier. I just want to clarify that our constitutional right to free speech is being violated, and we are being censored by our principal. And this is a clear case of discrimination based on our ethnicity because none of the other clubs at the school have gone through any of the experiences that we have. And we expect, or we would hope, that all members of this panel advocate for our constitutional right to free speech. Thank you.
Thank you.
Representative Kelly.
First, I wanted to say thank you, guys, for coming back and being dedicated to talking about the Green New Deal for Schools. But I wanted to commend you for talking about an important recent topic that's been very important for everyone to be aware. But how do you feel like cultural awareness should be addressed in schools?
Well, we have been trying... We tried to do a film screening of "The Occupation of the American Mind." We've even tried to do a Palestinian culture night to humanize Palestinians because they have been so commonly dehumanized in the past few months. And it's important to show Palestinian culture because when students don't know about it, they just come up with their own conclusions based on very biased opinions and views that they hear outside of school.
Thank you. Representative Yarkin.
Hello, everybody. Thank you for your testimony. Quickly to summarize, people. I ran out of questions for y'all a month ago, and I probably ran out of good questions for y'all two months ago. But I just want to say, I think that... But I just want to say I think that this is probably the easy part for y'all. I'm sure you work with the board, they've told you that the State Board doesn't have to worry about money, or logistics, or how these things are going to get passed. So congratulations on gaining the support of a lot of the members, but I think you should be aware that you might have to come up with something that's very concrete and powerful when you go to the City Council, where you're actually going to have to advocate putting money towards something, not just an ideological endorsement like you're getting here. And then also quickly, for Ms. Bernstad, I have a question. So when I envision a scenario where someone has to be mechanically restrained, I think of a very last resort thing. I'm sure the teachers here, Representative O'Leary, Representative Williams, teachers in the audience, Mr. Davis and Mr. Webster, like, a scenario where they'd have to physically restrain a student would be only one where someone's in danger, serious danger. And I want to know if you, I guess if you limit the ability of teachers to intervene when there is someone in serious danger, whether that has implications?
I understand your question, and I think this is an important question in deciding regulations around this. I think the first part is that seldom it is the case that this is the only option. It's just a case that especially when it's included in IEPs, it's really easy for folks to turn to because it's what they know. I think that, one, there is never a situation in which a student needs to be mechanically restrained, so their arms never need to be tied, they never need to be tied to anything, and there never needs to be a machine that's keeping them in place, because that always results in violence and is always too extreme to resolve something. I think, like, for example, at my high school, where Williams teaches, our counselors are trained in restraining a student without causing them any physical injury, but that is not the standard for teachers across the board, and I think that's what becomes problematic, because it's not that they have to restrain students, and that's always bad, rather that if a student is threatening another student or causing intense violence to another student, their response is to cause more violence to them because they don't know the proper ways to restrain them. So I think that it's a question of eliminating mechanical restraint completely, and then you can resolve all that other stuff by having proper training. It's also the same thing goes with seclusion. There's never a reason you have to lock a student physically in a room, there's other ways to create that separation between them and other students. But I thank you for that question.
Thank you.
Representative Williams.
Yeah, I want to first recognize that we have a public comment panel with only current and former students independently choosing to testify tonight, and I think that makes our schools and our cities stronger, so thank you all for being here. First, Ms. Mayer, Ms. Fisher, I'm excited to vote yes on the Green Deal resolution tonight. I'm also happy to help strategize how we can translate some of Representative Yarkin's concerns into the budget and into a vision for our city to advance, you know, a more climate-conscious economy and school system for everyone. Ms. Foddy, thank you for being here tonight. Your story is deeply concerning and troubling to me. I definitely have a couple particular follow-up questions. Were there particular ways in which the principal or the administration intervened? That, like, why do you feel particularly that you were restricted, or how did things occur as they unfolded?
Well, what specifically happened, is that what you're asking? Well, we asked to screen the movie The Occupation of the American Mind, and we put up posters, and people were taking them down, and also our principal wanted to have a meeting with us about it. And in the meeting, he was stating how we have to do this procedure every time we want to organize an event, but for other clubs, and even members of the Arab Student Union who are in other clubs stated how they didn't have to go through those procedures when they were hosting other events. So there's a double standard, and we feel like we're being targeted because of what we are advocating for.
And that makes sense to me. Have you thought about going through the procedure and trying again?
We did, we did go through the procedure.
And that was with the movie night?
Yeah, we actually, we sent him five alternative movie options, and he never replied to our emails, and yeah, he just ignored everything.
Got you. Well, I just want to name that, you know, I'm happy to be an ally with you in advancing this, and that you deserve to have your culture represented at school, and that schools should foster this type of dialogue and awareness, and, you know, stand against dehumanization of any group in person. So thank you for being here tonight. And then with my final 30 seconds, Ms. Bernstad, what's your best guess at what the data does look like at a local level on restraint and seclusion?
The DRDC report that I shared with y'all is really clear about this. The data shows this is a metric that's, or this is an intervention that's disfortunately used against disabled students and boys, and it just increases cyclically violent kind of response methods. It's very limited because the problem is the reports never describe the actual restraint or seclusion, or actually indicate that it occurs.
Representative Henderson.
Representative Leeve Bernstad, first question to you. Thank you for bringing this back to us a second time. As you know, we have a School, Community, and Well-Being Committee and a State Level Policy Committee. Which committee do you think this would fit under best?
I think it's a question of the State Policy Committee. I think it's more under the theme of, like, safe and healthy schools, which we talked about a lot, but I think it's definitely a question of the State Policy Committee. But I don't think that this work is necessarily isolated there. I think that it needs to be a collaboration with, like, if there is any research done on this, I think that's more like school, community, and well-being, but actually getting the council and OSCE to push for this has to be a state policy question, especially around creating recommendations. Thank you for that question.
Thank you. Ms. Foddy, I agree with what you were saying about what a school should be in terms of welcoming, it should not do harm, and I'm sorry that you've been made to feel otherwise. From your perspective, what would be a just outcome in this situation?
I think the just outcome is allowing us to do, if we go through the proper procedures, to show the movie and to show the Palestinian Culture Festival, and not to have different regulations for us than for the other clubs at this school.
Okay, thank you. I'm not sure how we can be of help there, but I hope that we can, and I hope that you can achieve that outcome.
Oh, sorry.
No, go ahead.
Well, maybe Mr. Brown, our principal, is the main issue here. He is, when we asked vice principals or people below him, they were absolutely fine with us doing the events, including the Jewish Student Union and the club sponsor and stuff. But the main issue is Mr. Brown, he's the one preventing us from doing it, so maybe talking to him about it would be very helpful.
Thank you. And to Ms. Mayer and Ms. Fisher, thank you for your persistence. I hope that you'll continue this work, and I'm happy to help as I can. I've sent you some additional paths to pursue. I'm happy to support on any of those as well. Thank you.
Representative O'Leary.
We're supposed to be the voice for public education in the District of Columbia, but that pales in comparison to what the student panel has just done, what all of their friends with the signs in the background have done, and what Superintendent Grant was talking about, about voting, is that's how you get things done anyplace. Good people get voted in, and bad people get voted in. Because she gave numbers that were startling in Iowa. The work, this is all good, and everybody will be cheering and everything for what y'all have done, and I hope that the students at Wilson, or Jackson Reed, I'm sorry, have learned a lesson about what adults do and what adults should do. But this is just the beginning, because we have a lot of schools in the city that need real green help. And I think that I mentioned the first time y'all testified, you know, you need to get out to the schools in the city. Now that y'all are famous advocates, is you need to pull in students from those schools, because we have schools in Ward Four that aren't anywhere close to green. Some of them are rotting, and we need your help. So I appreciate your advocacy. Don't stop, and once you get to college, come back and advocate again. But the only way that we change things in this city is by standing up for those who need help. Thank you.
Representative Reed.
Good evening, all on the panel, as well as all who are supporting from your chairs and the audience. First, I'll start with Leeve. I'm curious, as someone who has had to restrain and participate in seclusion, I'm curious of your data by school, as well as data by LEA, if you have that, or have we looked at that? Because I know there should be some, there are going to be some outliers, because I've processed reports. And I'm curious of, are you seeing certain schools, like you said, River Terrace, I'm probably saying Coletta, because they have higher numbers, which might actually be in IEPs, but I'm curious of, like, there's a level of training that's supposed to be involved, only individuals who are trained are supposed to engage in that behavior, there's an option to keep the door open, never locked, definitely never using tools, like you said. So I'm just curious of, are the outliers removed? And not outliers in the sense of, like, but because you're going to have higher intensity needs there.
Yeah, so there is not much super accessibly public data about this on a school-by-school level. Most of it is national. I think that it's really hard to get at the data, because like I said, there's not regulations that are followed for how you report that data, or how you indicate seclusion, but from the individual, and I also don't think necessarily if it's an outlier or not, does it matter? Because I think it's a question of regulations of the district as a whole. And like I said, the report that I've included includes concrete examples of, yes, schools that primarily serve students with disabilities, but I think that it's clear that even those that are trained are not following specific guidelines, and I think that's where the concern comes. I went to a school, in elementary school, that was a mixture of general ed and special education students, and I've also found that the training just seems not to be there.
Yeah. I want to, let's work, because I think we have both interesting perspectives. That's my one minute. I think that's my one minute. Ms. Foddy, you are seen and heard, and I know this board, you know, certain powers, et cetera, but more than happy to at least send an email inquiring about the protocol, what happened there. And you also had me thinking about, some years ago, not really long ago, 2019-ish, Washington Met, I know DC had put some more restrictions in place regarding to students protesting going down to the Wilson Building, that kind of thing, and it just seemed to come out of thin air, once Washington Met students started going down to council, excuse me, to advocate on their behalf, that was an almond that just came out of my mouth. So I'm more in line of, like, I want to definitely see if we can follow up. I also want to, you had me thinking about a bigger issue in regards of how do students have their voices raised without interference, when people feel like it's quote-unquote inappropriate? So yes, let's work. Actually, Williams, I'll hang out with you and do that.
Representative Guley.
I want to thank you all. Representative Bernstad, Ms. Bernstad now, it is great to see you again. Thank you for coming down, and certainly would love to continue following up with you on this issue. Ms. Foddy, you have not got a response from the principal on either the movie screening or, other than just saying no, or the alternative, which is the Palestinian Cultural Celebration?
For the movie, we haven't got a response, but for the Palestinian Culture Night, the principal said no, and the reason was, he said that it did not foster a safe environment for the students, which we replied by saying that the students that would be most sensitive are the Jewish students at the school, and they've shown full support for us. And every thing we said in return to him was completely ignored.
You know, Jackson Reed's within my ward, I'm glad to follow up in an email with him, because I think what we do need with these policies is, we need consistency and then an explanation that is in writing, so if something is denied, you know, there's a rationale that's clearly given in writing for denying it, and then, you know, hopefully an alternative. Because I understand, you know, how you're feeling on this. I'm familiar with the movie, I had not seen it myself, but I would like to work with you to see if there's a compromise that could be worked out with the principal. And I think ultimately, you know, in issues like this, everybody's got to have a sense of fairness, that there's a standard across the board that's clear, that it's then in writing from the principal, so then you don't feel like you're being treated in an unfair way. So I'm glad to work with you on that, and I'll be glad to give you my contact information after the meeting, if you like, and we'd be glad to follow up with the principal. Just want to congratulate Ms. Mayer, Ms. Fisher. You have been amazing advocates on this. I'm so excited that you came down here on such an important issue, because the issue of climate change is one of the crises that we're facing as a globe right now, and the nation's capital should be a leader in this effort. And you have not only led in impressive fashion, you've gotten a crowd that really is bigger every time you come down here. And it doesn't disappoint tonight, so thank you both. I'd just like to thank Representative Chang for bringing this to us as well, President Ebony Rose Thompson for getting this to the finish line here, and then, you know, as you mentioned, we've got Jen and Kathleen who did amazing work on this to get this ready to go. So all the credit to you and to them for this effort tonight. I don't have any further questions, I think, for you, just to say that, you know, there is a path, only two of your initiatives, as I see, should have a fiscal impact. One is on the school lunches, which we already know that legislation's been introduced, and we got to get it funded, and then the other is making sure that we electrify these buildings. We start to make all our buildings, as we do the facilities master plan, that we add an environmental component to make sure they're modernized in a way that is cutting edge. And I'll be glad to work with you on that, we'll work with the committees you need to speak to, because you've got the momentum right now, and we just need to get this across the finish line. So congratulations to you and to everyone here for this effort tonight.
Thank you. Representative Best.
Thank you all for advocating for yourselves and others, and I think that's really important. Ms. Foddy, I love your intentionality, from providing alternatives to coming to the State Board. I'd love to talk to you offline about some possible next steps.
Thank you.
Ms. Bernstad, for clarity, are you asking for the complete elimination of restraints and seclusions, or for better regulations for when to use them, or better reporting mechanisms?
Thank you for that question. I'm asking for a few things. I think, one, we should eliminate mechanical restraints completely, there's no reason we should have them. Second, I think that we should eliminate seclusion, I don't think there's any chance we should lock students in a room. I also think that there needs to be more clarity in regulations with how this is reported. Another instance that the report that I shared talks about is how a charter school was willing to provide academic records, but doesn't provide videos of incidents when they have videos. So I think it's more of a question of ensuring that reports are regulated, and ensuring that restraints and seclusion are also not included in students' IEPs. Because the research that I've done more about national stuff this summer says that when restraints and seclusions are included in IEPs, they're more fastly turned to as a measure for use against specific students, as opposed to when they're only supposed to be used as a last resort. I also think that DCPS, which has this regulation, that it should only be used as a last resort, actually indicates what the alternatives are and what measures must take place before restraint and seclusion are utilized. I'd also be happy to send you more specific information.
Please do. Thank you.
Representative Chang.
Representative Emeritus Bernstad, welcome back. My question for you is around case studies we should be looking at. So what are the jurisdictions that you'd recommend that are doing this better than we are?
I'm actually not sure, because it seems like this is a pretty large national issue, but what I can do is I can send you a follow-up email with some places that I think are doing it better than we are, and also connect you with some folks who are much more knowledgeable on the topic.
Thank you. And to Ms. Mayer, Ms. Fisher, and all the students with us here tonight, I am inspired. You have accomplished something that many professional advocacy groups have not been able to do as effectively, or as thoughtfully. And I agree with, yes, Representative Yarkin's important points, that your upcoming challenges will require you to move from this macro-level conversation to more and more micro-level analyses regarding budgets, program designs, supply chain to more and more micro-level analyses regarding budgets, program designs, supply chains, legislation. And for what it's worth, I believe in what you have done to date, and what you will do, not only because of the passion, but also in the past three months, the demonstration that you've shown of being capable of doing the research, asking the right questions, listening to how different people answer those questions. And even in these last three months, what's been amazing and inspiring is seeing how quickly you've pivoted, based on that new information that you've learned. And, and the demonstration that you're actually really, really deeply listening to different people's experiences and advice. And I expect that my colleagues will vote in support of this resolution. And I, I, I hope that will be helpful leverage for you to make the changes that you seek.
Vice President Patterson?
Thank you. I'll move from my left to my right. For the Sunrise Movement, I just appreciate how you guys have shown up time and time again. And I know you guys said you guys would show up until we did something, and we're voting on the resolution, which I enthusiastically will be voting to support. But I hope that this won't be the end of you guys showing up, and continuing to advocate in the way that you have. I wish that people could see from my vantage point what this crowd looks like, and how just overwhelming it feels to see students populate this body, and exercise this voice at this particular time. So I look forward to supporting you guys, hopefully seeing you guys some more in the future on other issues as you guys continue to advocate. Ms. Folti, thank you for being here. Thank you for being a voice. As my colleague said, you are seen and you're heard. And I agree with my other peers that we're willing to support you and to be there with you. I'm willing to attend meetings, or whatever, maybe with my other colleague from Ward III that represents Ward III, as we try to make sure that they also see and hear you, and what you're advocating for. You have my full support.
Leeve? As, as my colleague said, the Emeritus representative for us. Thank you for just being who you are, and how you show up. What I would say tonight, as you've been a member of this, of this body, we also have our student advocate in the back, and our ombudsman in the back. We know that in the interim time, that we're going to be advocating for the things that you spoke of tonight. What advice would you give us, and as we listen to parents, because parents are going to call us in that interim time, this is going to happen over and over again? What would you say to us, so we can be responsive to the parents who are going to call us, and ask us to advocate for them?
I think that one of the most important things is to be sensitive with the stories that they tell you. The only stories that I've included today are not stories that I've, are not the only stories that I've heard, but rather the only stories that I've published. I think a lot of times, the way that disabled students are utilized in the media is pretty violent against them. And I don't want any student to be forced to become kind of the focal point of this discussion. Another thing, and this is just what I've learned, is to get anything done, you have to be really annoying and just not shut up about it.
Yes.
And I think especially with issues like this, that are kind of more silent and ongoing, and don't have much data, you really have to continue to push in that specific way, and bring it up at every single meeting, and every single like instance that you get. It should be something that people are like, oh my gosh, they're talking about this again? Because yes, they are talking about this again, and they will talk about it, like until something gets done. I think we've learned that that method is very effective, and that's what I think would be helpful.
Thank you so much. And as we reconstitute our committees, I look forward to putting this in a committee that makes sure that this is an urgent and priority for us. Thank you.
President Thompson?
So I, I just want to express, I guess, a note of gratitude to each of you, because you did not have to come here and be with us. And each of you have kind of shown us, not just leadership, but kind of resilience in your own way. Ms. Folti, am I saying that correctly? Ms. Folti, did you come here by yourself?
No, I'm here with my, my sister and my parents.
Okay.
Yeah.
Aside from what you shared with us about the interactions with the principal, have you seen opportunities for peers in the school? I know you noted that like you went to the Jewish Student Association, but like for them to be supportive? Or do you feel, do you feel like truly alone in your efforts?
Um, no, um, within the Arab Student Union, there is a lot of support. Unfortunately, the, the principal is not letting us show that, that community to the rest of the school. But I do feel supported with the other members.
I'm really glad to hear that. I think we're just going to refer to you as the Emeritus from now on, Representative Bernstadt. I would, it would be helpful for me to, if you would remind us how this got on your radar in the first place, to your point about it being a silent issue.
Uh, yeah, this summer I did an internship, working with the education policy legislation person for Senator Chris Murphy. This was one of my research assignments. And I think that it's really easy for it to go silent, because it's a question of like, there isn't data. So if there's not data, we're not really seeing reports on it. I also think, though, that this is really intertwined with kind of other issues, like teacher retention, i.e. when special education teachers aren't retained well, it's really hard for them to develop relationships with the students that make other resources possible. So it's just kind of been popping up in a bunch of different ways in my last couple of months on the board.
Okay, that is helpful. Of course, we are voting this evening. I will say, even though like you challenged us, that you were going to continue showing up until it got done, you do know that we are still your representatives. And we hope that you continue to engage with us. Maybe not thirty at a time about this specific testimony, to the Emeritus's point around like how you get stuff done, because we've crossed that hurdle. But we do truly look forward, as many representatives have noted, to figure out like what the next steps are. And I definitely appreciate you all kind of having that conversation with me, because it prepared me to answer some questions for Representative Yarquin, who has done at the end of the dais. I got to present to our SAC this particular resolution, and they had wonderful questions, so thank you.
Well, thank you all for your testimony this evening. And we will now call our second and final panel of public witnesses for tonight. Lily Horn. Maya Burgess. Joe Reiner. Nadine Fotti. We'll start down here on this end, and work our way across.
Okay. I extend my sincere appreciation for the opportunity to testify before you today. I am Lily Horn, a student at Basis DC, and co-founder of our school's first Green Team. Our mission is clear, to elevate our school's commitment to environmental and sustainability projects, and inspire active participation in climate-related initiatives within our school community. My involvement in coaching soccer for young kids in my community is a source of great joy. However, this past summer, a stark reality unfolded as smoke from Canadian wildfires engulfed the skies. We relocated to a cramped, dilapidated basement, where uncomfortable and unhappy kids did their best to play. This experience served as a stark reminder of what the climate crisis will bring. Had my education better equipped me for such climate events, I could have provided reassurance, 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 and swift assistance to the children around me. Instead, I was completely caught off guard and unprepared. A comprehensive climate curriculum, as the resolution dictates, would have ensured that I was well-informed about the unfolding environmental challenges, empowering me to navigate unforeseen circumstances effectively, and fostering resilience in the face of an evolving climate landscape. Furthermore, the implementation of sustainable infrastructure, as demanded in the resolution, is in paramount to help with climate events like the smoke. Such infrastructure, as well as climate disaster plans, that are also mentioned in the resolution, would enhance our environmental efficiency, reduce our carbon footprint, and cultivate a safer environment. This proactive approach not only serves to postpone the inevitable, but also establishes a robust foundation for a sustainable and resilient community. I urge you to support the Green New Deal for school's resolution tonight. This is more than an investment in our future, it is a commitment to arming the current and future generations, like everyone in this room, with the knowledge and tools imperative for effectively addressing the challenges posed by climate change. Thank you for listening.
Hello, Board members. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today. My name is Maya Burgess-Forrest, and I'm a student at Basis DC, as well as a co-founder of our school's first Green Team. Many of us here are, are in this room out of fear. Yes, we are passionate, but we are also afraid of what the future will look like for ourselves and our children. We exist in fear because we can imagine it, and I would like to share that image with you. Students will wake up in the morning, the sound of alarm clocks and smoke-filled skies will be in place of chirping birds and green trees. Instead of sunrise, only dark-bilowing smog from nearby fires and booming factories will be in their view. In schools, they will mostly be concerned with learning how to survive in an increasingly dangerous world. Lunch will no longer be a time of peaceful socializing, but instead of people in a state of fear over their chemical-filled air. After-school activities will no longer occur outdoors, but rather permanently relocated to where the air is breathable. Returning home, there is no guarantee the water will be safe to drink. Famine will exist all over the world, ruining communities and families. Drastic weather events will frequently interfere with day-to-day activities. Epidemics and pandemics will happen more and more often. Young people, once full of dreams and excitement, will spend their time surviving, as it is virtually impossible to thrive in a dying world. Every day, we inch closer to a world where that fear is our entire reality. I urge you to do your part and support the Green New Deal for schools tonight, so we may stop this crisis before it's too late. Thank you for your time.
Hi, my name is Joe Reiner. I'm a former teacher at what is now happily called Jackson Reed High School. I had the great pleasure of teaching Nadine Fotti, although I did not stay around long enough to teach her younger sister Yasmin. I wanted to come here today to share with you my experience of offering the ideas about Palestine history that I offered in my classroom every year. I offered an essay by Sarah Nussebe, who is a professor and president of Al-Quds University in Jerusalem. And he had the pleasure, he said, and the honor of being beaten up by both Israelis and Palestinians because of his moderate views. But he wanted to offer an idea about Palestine history. I offered this to my students, we had a very good discussion. Some students expressed that they had never heard these ideas before. Some said they were very familiar with the ideas, but in fact, they had never heard them in a classroom. So we had a good discussion. And then the bell rang, and we went on to the next thing. It was a good class, I thought, I offered an idea, students thought about it. They were very respectful with each other, as they almost always are. And we went on. When I read the article in the Washington Post, and my heart sank. And when I heard Yasmin talk, it sank even further, to realize that, you know, schools should be in the business of offering ideas. And this was an idea that could easily be offered in the classroom, or in the school environment. And people could talk about it. And I feel that the, the Jackson Reed administration is really shortchanging the students, is really not allowing them to encounter and discuss this idea, and it does not in any way understand that students can handle this. They've handled many other ideas. They, they live in a world full of racism, and sexism, and homophobia, and, you know, all kinds of terrible things. And they handle that. And they can certainly handle the idea about Palestine history. And I would urge you all, as a school board, to tell the Jackson administration this, to trust the students. They really can handle this, they can talk about it. And they will learn a lot, I believe. That's my idea.
Hello, everyone, my name is Nadine Fotti, and I am a teacher now of ten years. And I'm also a former student at Wilson High School, now known as Jackson Reed. I graduated in 2009. And I'd like to talk about kind of the legacy of this anti-Palestinian racism that exists not only at Jackson Reed, but across the United States, due to the intense Israeli lobby that supports our school systems. So when I was a student at Wilson, I wanted to participate in the International Night, and was refused to have a table, to just offer food, Palestinian food on the table. Not talk about anything related to what's happening, or about the political situation. Just represent my food, and I was refused to do so. And my mother insisted that I go, and I stand with an empty table, and explain to people that I wasn't allowed to. And at that time, that, those acts of protest were actually allowed. The administration wouldn't do much if we pressured them, and would, despite their censorship, we would still continue to do things. And now I'm just completely outraged that fifteen years later, we are still back at the same point. Also, my sister, who graduated in 2004, she wrote a paper about Palestine, and her teacher gave her a bad grade, under no basis. And my mother went in with her to, to, to evaluate with the teacher what was wrong. And he had to, the principal made him change the grade, because he was discriminating against her based on her political positions. And this is blatant discrimination, and it is something that is very important, because our family, I, we have, I'm Palestinian-American, and we have friends who forty members of the family have been murdered and annihilated, okay? Imagine, families are being completely wiped out. And those tax dollars are our tax dollars that should be going to Washington DC, and our education, and our schools. And we're funding a genocide to kill people, and it's all coming, money being sent to Israel in a military machine. So this is very troubling, and the materials that they sent out to us, Mr. Brown, after we had a meeting with him, they sent us the materials that they're sending to the teachers to educate them about what's going on, to talk with their students. And the, and the materials need major revisions. I mean, it's coming straight out of an Israeli propaganda book. Israel Hamas war, there is no mention of Palestinians, or any type of humanization of Palestinians, were painted as tales. And the whole curriculum of what teachers are being taught to talk about is centered on antisemitism. And advocacy for Palestinian liberation and anti-Zionist stance are not antisemitic. Let me make that very clear. And that needs to be embedded in the system, because it's a big problem. And it made me dear, and now my sister, and countless Arab and Palestinian communities across the country.
Thank you all for your testimony. We will now call our first round of witnesses.
Representative, excuse me, our first round of questions.
Representative Washington?
Hi, thank you all so much for coming out tonight. I don't think I had any questions, but I just had like individual gratuity for each of you. Starting with Lily and Maya, Ms. Horn and Ms. Burgess, thank you all so much for coming out tonight. It's amazing seeing basis faces, and I'm happy you're here to support the Green New Deal resolution. So thank you all for coming. Oh, I actually did have a question, I'm sorry. For Mr. Reiner?
Reiner.
Reiner, I'm sorry. First, I wanted to thank you both for coming out to support Ms. Folti's cause and Palestinian liberation period. And not only that, but the proper teaching and representation of all, of all people, all history, all cultures. So thank you so much for coming out. My question was, you talked a lot about like pushback from administration, with specific examples from the ASU. I was wondering if you had any pushback with when you were trying to teach? I forgot the specific that you mentioned, but trying to pretty much teach about alternative perspectives, or if you have in the past?
That's my point, I, I did not. It was an idea, and at the time, you know, perhaps there would have been some people that were ruffled with the idea, but nobody in the administration ever questioned me about it. And it, you know, it, it became part of the work of the school at the time. You know, to have an idea, and to talk about it, and think about it, jeez, I never thought about that before. And gosh, maybe I'll look at the world a little differently. It was all something that my students were quite mature, and were able to tolerate. And I, I think it was nothing but fear on the part of the Jackson Reed administration that prompted them to squelch this. They should have let it, let it happen.
Hundred percent. Thank you.
Let people see a movie, let people eat the food, and talk about it. That's what school is.
Thank you. I'll use my remaining time, if anyone has any additional comments. But if not, thank you all for coming.
I just want to say too, that like, I-
I just want to say too that like I was lucky to be a student of Mr. Reiner, and I mean, I was able to voice my opinions about Palestine, and that was very validating for me because usually educational spaces are very, you know, antagonistic towards my Palestinian identity. I'm also half Egyptian, and when I tell people I'm Egyptian, they're like very enthusiastic about it, but then my Palestinian identity, they don't want to engage on. And so it was just, I think it was so essential. It's essential to have curriculum that humanizes Palestinians. And I myself and many of my colleagues who are Palestinians who have written curriculums on Palestine that I think DCPS and the DC school system could really, really benefit from including because it will really help us feel, feel seen and really humanize our cause.
Thank you. Representative Yeflor.
Thank you for your testimony. I'll start with Lilly and Maya. I appreciate y'all coming out to talk about, like to further emphasize the issue, the climate issue. I'm excited to vote in favor today. And yeah, and then for, for Mr. Reiner, I'm curious about, like, did, like with the discussions you have, you had about like Palestine, were those, like, were they, did they offer like materials to like talk about it, or was it just like, because I know that you, I know it was talked about there being like in Jackson Reed and like sending out materials to talk about like, to like have those discussions and that those were problematic, but like Mr. Reiner, like, did you have, like, were those materials available?
Yes, we all start off with the essay by Sarah Nussebe, as I'm saying, that, you know, I felt that he was an important Palestinian voice and that the people could, could read that and then we could begin our discussion. I guess maybe part of my point is that it wasn't any big deal, you know, to have a group of students in a classroom confront a new idea was the educational work. And they understood that, and they were very respectful, and, and we did it. And I think the same thing could happen right now, too. And I feel like it was only the fear of the Jackson Reed administration that prevented that. And to me, that's anti-education.
Thank you. And a follow-up question for both of you. What, like, specific changes do you think, like, would you like to see in curriculum across schools? Yeah, like what would be most beneficial?
Well, I think that what was sent out to the teachers, what I received was like, it was like Israel-Hamas war. First of all, that type of terminology, we really need to start redefining things. First of all, this is not a war, it's an occupation and a genocide that's occurring. Regardless of where you stand on the issue, it's very clear. Over 25,000 people have been annihilated, half of which are children. And so this is not a discussion to say whether it's a war or genocide. And second, if you're equating the two sides as Israel and Hamas, the Palestinian people, there's no humanization of Palestinians. You're associating us with a, with an organization, and so that creates a very skewed idea of who the Palestinian people are and what they represent. And so if you're just equating us solely with an organization, so I think, I personally have a lot of resources on Palestine. I have many colleagues who write curriculums on Palestine. I'm currently writing an early childhood curriculum about Palestine because I think it needs to start early, but yeah, I can provide that.
Thank you.
Representative Yarkin.
Hello, thank you all for your testimony, like always. I think I have a question for the Sunrise people, not to sound like a broken record, but when you do go to city council, are you guys going with the intention of bringing your ideas and sort of hoping they endorse it and figure out a way to implement them? Or are you coming with them, are you coming to them with sort of an idea for legislation?
Um, sorry, can you, can you repeat that?
Oh, yeah, sorry. I mean, I just mean like, are you guys coming to city council with more of like the ideas behind the Sunrise movement? Or are you going to, it's going to come with legislation that you want them to approve?
Um, I think we're going with the intention of both, of course, like bringing awareness and coming with an idea, but also ready to provide legislation to further the Green New Deal.
Thank you.
Representative Williams.
Thank you all for your testimony. Ms. Horn and Ms. Burgess, again, I appreciate your activism and enthusiasm. I'm excited to vote yes on the resolution tonight. Mr. Reiner and Ms. Foti, the more I hear you and your sister talk tonight, the sadder I get, right? This, and Mr. Reiner, you had pointed out so clearly that like this isn't just, you know, anti-Palestinian liberation or anti, it's anti-education, it's anti-free discourse, it's anti, it's everything that education should be, right? Like, every day, I'm a 12th grade government teacher, so, you know, I'm also a Jewish American. And, you know, in the last couple of months, we've had many discussions in my classroom, and I've been really heartened that some of my Muslim-American students have felt like, hey, we're able to interrogate Western media bias. Hey, we're able to, you know, say that you can be pro-Palestine and not be viewed as antisemitic. And just being able to have that type of freedom of thought that will help work for a more humanized world. So I'm just really, yeah, troubled when, when these things happen, when you can't share your culture, when you can't share your food, when you can't, you know, talk about the realities of our world today. And I hope that, you know, Representative Gulay, you know, as the, as the Ward Two representative, can, can take the lead on being able to reach out to the Jackson Reed administration. And I'm hopeful that we can get change immediately, you know, that the, the Arab Student Union can, you know, freely carry out the activities that the students want. And I'm happy to push also for representative curriculum in our, in our schools. So, you know, even as a Jewish American, like I don't want AIPAC to be, you know, pushing their media bias in, in our schools, and that, that doesn't really serve free thinking, that doesn't really serve the aims that a true education should. So thank you for being here tonight and for letting us know that something needs to be addressed.
Thank you. Representative Henderson.
Thank you. I'll just say that exposure to ideas, other cultures, other foods, critical thinking sounds right to me, sounds engaging to our previous conversation, so I, I think you're right. I don't really have any other questions, but thank you for, for voicing that.
Representative O'Leary.
The common thread is we live in a racist society. And portions of that society never want the truth to come to the surface. And so that, I won't say everyone's younger than I am, but I think I'm older than everybody. Maybe, maybe Mr. Reiner and I are right in the same ballpark. But we've been fighting that fight about banning books, about banning speech, about banning thought, and it's up to the students to force the teachers to let them speak. Because I, I've been, I taught, and I'm still teaching, books that are banned in the United States in certain states. Luckily, I haven't ever had anybody complain about the books yet. But what we want you to do, the students, is to stick up for the truth. Because that's not happening in this country right now. And it's up to the young people to change that. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative O'Leary. Representative Reed.
Thank you again for the testimonies. And I think this round kind of hammered in on, we were very excited and clapped when we passed our social studies standards recently, but a good reminder of the next level and step, which is not in our purview, but I always think we're still attached and we matter in regards to the curriculum development, how we're going to implement, and how we're going to make sure people feel seen and heard in the anti-bias social studies standards that were passed, or at least our best attempt at that. And so I'm so happy to hear that you are developing curriculum for especially early childhood that's unique, and that is where it starts, but hopefully also materials related to for our older students. Because I will say, I was a student who, I like telling myself, probably not until I was 21 in grad school, in a speech pathology class, which you would never think is where I learned about the Palestinian struggle, because I had a friend, Nancy Elias, behind me, who had to say a couple curse words in class for us to get our attention about certain issues. So when I see you and your sister and your family, I think about Nancy and her family who are still worried about, or their family members are okay, they're safe, but they're constantly calling and checking in on the West Bank. So I wouldn't have known that until I met someone who was willing to stand up, speak out, speak out forcefully when she needed to. So now I think it's definitely the humanization piece that you said, but also making it come alive so that students don't learn about this, like me when I was 21, but old, younger through hopefully your efforts, and then also as we're going through our other standards with our older students. So looking forward to at least whenever I hear words about curriculum, to say, oh, wait, are we considering this? Is this considered, even though it's out of our purview, but still matters? Yes, I got one minute.
I'll just say that in California, they have a resource for history, for high school students called Teach Palestine, and I can provide that information. But they have a whole curriculum on Palestine for high school students, and I'm sure also Mr. Reiner could provide any materials that he has to. So there's a lot, there's a lot on, in high school specifically. That's why I focus on early childhood, because there's not a lot.
Smart, smart. Yes, please pass those materials because we check off standards, but it's also, I think, to help also with, you know, guiding implementation where we can, or at least saying, hey, this is the idea that we heard at the board, could you consider in the materials that are being developed? Oh, because I have 25 seconds? Sorry. I just want to shout out the sign holders. I know you all haven't been able to say much, but you have been very dedicated, especially with pathways to green jobs and to my left side and my right side. So I just wanted to shout y'all out.
Thank you. Representative Gulay.
I'd like to thank you all. Mr. Reiner, I agree with you 100%. Having an exchange of ideas is something that's really kind of gotten lost, I think, in America and maybe across the world, of being able to listen to somebody, understand their point of view, and then just discuss things without getting angry. So I appreciate you doing that in your class, leading that way. I have not seen this movie, I will watch it this weekend because I've heard things about, about the film, but I want to make my own judgment for it. And I will speak with the principal about it because I do think you need to have consistent standards, and you, and you need to make sure that those are done fairly across the board, not, you know, one group versus another group. So I appreciate, you know, you being a voice for trying to bring people together and have discussions about things. I think that's very important in academia. You know, on the issue of, you know, our, our support for this resolution, I want to thank you two for coming down. We've got a fight up ahead, and it's going to be on February 28th, it's going to be the key date on this. We have a chairman of the council, and I raged against this last year, and I'm still angry about it this year, who really disrespects the public, Chairman Mendelson. It used to be we had a committee on education, and every public witness got three minutes per agency. And that's important because sometimes you'd have three or four different agencies that would be all up on the same day. So you'd want to speak about special ed busing, you'd want to talk about one student maybe who's in DCPS, another student who's in our charter schools. You'd want to talk about the boundary study in the deputy mayor for education. So last year Chairman Mendelson put all the hearings on a single day, and it was over 400 public witnesses, like about 200 of whom dropped off. It's slightly better this year, but he's still got the three major agencies on the same day. And there really is no explanation or excuse for this. It's incredibly disrespectful to the public. But I want to reach out to the people in the Sunrise group. I think we can kind of strike a blow to this as well, because the good thing for you all is you have the energy to stay up till two or three in the morning. So what we can do is sign up, sign up the last day, and let's get 200 people on Chairman Mendelson's witness list and teach him, first of all, that this is an important issue, let's make some news about it, and then maybe next time he won't be so disrespectful and put all these agencies on one day again. So I think it's a great opportunity to have a little bit of activism. I'm glad to participate in it. I intend to show up to every one of his hearings to talk about how he's disrespecting the public in terms of not giving everybody three minutes per agency. Because you want to talk to your state superintendent, you want to talk to the chancellor of DCPS, and you want to talk to the deputy mayor. So you're going to have to split it up because you only get three minutes total. But I'm glad to make you, make this work because I think it's really, really important that we get your voice heard and we do it on the 28th. That's going to be a key date. So looking forward to working with you all, and thank you so much for coming out night after night after night. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Representative Gulay. Representative Best.
Thank you. Ms. Foti, I welcome the opportunity to speak with you after the meeting. Thank you.
Representative Chang.
First, to the students, I was, I got to be at Basis today to share the Board of Education's resolution honoring a Basis teacher, Ms. Marinchuk, for winning the Milken Education, Milken Educator Award, and it was great to be back on your campus, and it's great to see more Ward Two students here tonight, so thank you. My question is actually more for, for the two of you concerning the, the topic that's been brought up in the rest of the, this panel regarding if and how Palestinian history or culture has been incorporated in, in any of your education to date.
Yeah, I'll say at Basis, personally, at least in like history classes, I've, I've never heard it discussed, I'll be honest with you. And we don't have an Arab Student Union or a Jewish Student Union because we're quite small. And honestly, I don't feel like they've been discussed at all. I mean, aside from, I don't know, that's about it, yeah. I, like, in school itself, except between conversation between friends, that's the only place that I've seen it mentioned at all.
Thank you.
She pretty much summed it up. I think there's a lot of an awareness that needs to be brought to this issue, and thank you for coming out and sharing that with us. Yeah.
Thank you.
Vice President Patterson.
Thank you. From my vantage point, I believe I see from our former panelists, Ms. Foti, is that, those your parents that are staying with you?
Oh, yeah, yeah, that, that's right.
Both your parents. First and foremost, I want to say I always appreciate and acknowledge parents who come and support their children to advocate for their rights. That means so much to me, to, to see them do that, but to see parents supporting them. So thank you for being here with us tonight. Secondly, I've lived in this city long enough to where the count, not the council, but the state board had a lot more power than it did today. In 2007, a lot of those powers were stripped away from this body and given to the council. One thing they did not take from us is our ability to advocate and to use our bully pulpit to join very just causes, to make sure that those voices are elevated for the constituents that elect us to this body. I look forward to working with you guys on this. I think, you know, my colleague, Representative Williams, said it best, when you don't allow schools to teach the truth, you are actually being anti-educational. You are anti-education. And I think that's what's happening in this particular situation. We don't always have to agree, but we do have to allow people to tell their truth and their experience. That's what education is about. Mr. Reiner, I appreciate that you taught that and you had that ability to do that, but we need to make sure that we can continue to be able to do that in our schools, to teach the truth, even when it's controversial. Because in that dialogue is where we find that common ground to recognize Because in that dialogue is where we find that common ground to recognize each other's humanity. So I want to thank each one of you, the parents, you guys that are here in front of us, and I look forward to using my bully pulpit to support you in your advocacy. Thank you.
President Thompson.
I'm happy to round us out. I will start with our Sunrise Movement friends, and I will do my best to answer Representative Yarquin's question again. So I think there's a couple sets of steps and goals after this, some of which are part of the budget process, which Representative Goulet hinted at. I will admit, I am slightly terrified of the idea of Representative Goulet and all of you students joining forces. Yeah, I'm worried for Chairman Mendelson on that one. But there, I think there are coupled, and this is what advocacy looks like, right? Like you find the different pieces and the points you can press. And so I think one of them is like actually the budget season. And so we've talked about that a little bit in our meeting, and happy to continue to connect on like, how do you get things done? Because it's normally not like one button you push, right? I very much appreciate both of you all's testimony, and I think many of my, what many of my colleagues expressed are, are shared, are shared sentiments. I'm not so sure there's something I could add that is of additional value. I will say, though, that my heart sank a little bit when you described not even being able to like have a table, like in your high school and like share your food. And I, I did take some joy in you saying that, and my mom told me that what I was supposed to do was go stand there and be like, let me explain to you why I don't have a table, because I have that kind of mom too. And that's a special kind of mom. So I do take some joy in that, and I really appreciate just all of you and what you've shared tonight. I'm happy to let you go, because it's getting late, and it is cold and snowy outside. But if there are any closing thoughts that you have to share with us, I will welcome them. And if not, that's okay too. All right. Well, I would like to thank this panel and all the panels before us. I believe that concludes our public testimony this evening.
That does conclude our public testimony for this evening. Again, thank you to all of our public witnesses for joining us, and I'll turn this meeting back over to our president.
All right, that concludes our public testimony, but not our meeting. So I want to thank all of our public witnesses again for their comments tonight. We sincerely appreciate it. We are now moving on to vote on our, not one, not two, not three, but four state resolutions. One, which a considerable amount of you all have come for. So here's what we are going to do. I will look for a motion and a second for each resolution, followed by Director Butler's favorite activity of reading the resolution into the record. Once the resolution is read into the record, we will have member discussion in, we will have three minutes, yeah, member discussion, members get up to three minutes. I feel like that's a little liberal. That's very liberal. Maybe we won't time, because I don't think we need three minutes. But members will do rounds of member statements before roll call votes are conducted. We now will move on to vote on our first state resolution. That is SR 24-1, Extending the Appointment of the Interim Ombudsman for Public Education. Is there a motion?
So moved.
All right. Thank you, Vice President Patterson, for moving the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I think I heard Representative Goulet get there first, so thank you for the second. The motion has been properly moved and seconded. Director Butler, please read the resolution into the record. Thank you in advance.
State Board of Education Resolution Extending the Appointment of Interim Ombudsman for Public Education, SR 24-1. Whereas the D.C. State Board of Education has authority over the appointment of the ombudsman for public education under the Ombudsman for Public Education Establishment Act of 2007, effective June 12, 2007, as a part of the Public Education Reform Amendment of 2007. Whereas the D.C. Official Code declares that the state board must appoint a new ombudsman to fill the remainder of an unexpired term 75 days, within 75 days of the occurrence of the vacancy. Whereas, at the public meeting on July 19, 2023, the state board appointed Toni Kreiner to the position of interim ombudsman for public education until January 24, 2024, and directed the executive director to begin the hiring process for a permanent ombudsman for public education. Whereas the hiring process is still ongoing as of the public meeting of January 17, 2024, and therefore the state board needs to extend the term of the interim role. Now therefore, let it be resolved that the state board approves the continuation of the hiring process for a permanent ombudsman for public education led by the executive director, be it finally resolved that Toni Kreiner's appointment as interim for the public, interim ombudsman for public education is extended for an additional 75 days until April 8, 2024, or until a permanent ombudsman for public education is appointed, whichever comes first.
Thank you, Director Butler. I am now coming to our students. Is there a student, no, there is, there should not be a student advisory committee on this statement, right? All right. Want to make sure I'm not overlooking you all. Is there any discussion on this resolution aside from the statement? Okay, I want to thank our, our current interim ombudsman Toni Kreiner for her service thus far, and being willing, of course, to continue to take up the mantle as we consider this extension. So if there is no further discussion, the motion is to adopt SR 24-1, and Director Butler will call the roll.
Representative Vierfloh. Representative Washington.
Aye.
Representative Yarquin.
Aye.
Representative Williams.
Aye.
Representative Chang.
Aye.
Representative Goulet.
Aye.
Representative Henderson.
Aye.
Representative Best.
Aye.
Representative Reed.
Aye.
Representative O'Leary.
Aye.
Vice President Patterson.
Aye.
President Thompson.
Aye.
SR 24-1 is approved unanimously.
Thank you again to Ms. Kreiner. It sounds like you'll be sticking with us a bit longer. All right, so we will, I mean, that's, that's what the motion was. We will now move on to vote on state resolution SR 24-2, recommending the creation of a citywide high school voter registration contest. I am going to assume that Representative Williams would like to move this.
Yes.
All right, I will take that as moved. And is there a second?
Second.
All right, I think that was Representative O'Leary. Okay, thank you. So it has been properly moved and seconded. Director Butler.
President Thompson, may I, may I propose that we, we vote on this without reading it out loud?
You would like to waive the reading?
Yes.
Do we have to vote on it? All right, so we are going to take a vote, excuse me, voice vote on waiving of the reading. So all in favor to waive the reading, please indicate now. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The silence says the motion carries. Okay. Thank you, Director Butler. Sounds like you have a reprieve. I would absolutely welcome a student advisory committee statement. We haven't got to that part yet. All right, I want to welcome a student advisory committee statement on this resolution, because I know you have one.
We do have one. On January 8th, the SAC unanimously voted to support SR 24-2, recommending the creation of a citywide high school voter registration contest, but recommended the lowering of the 100% registration requirement for pizza party to 95% student registration to account for, you know, stragglers who refuse to participate.
I do remember that being part of the discussion, not subpoena, like, you know, progress, not perfection. I appreciate it. Is there further discussion on the resolution? Representative Williams?
Yes. I would just like to say thank you to all the board members and the student advisory committee for the support of this resolution. I've been having many conversations with the deputy mayor's office, the board of elections, and currently working with our secretary of state as well, just to see how we can get data on student registration. And then also noting that this is a beginning, not an end, you know, in being able to create informed voters in the new generation for our cities. So this is, should be seen ideally as a kickoff, to be able to make sure that we have a strategy, a citywide strategy in place for comprehensive voter registration, and then we can think through as a board and as a city, how to integrate voter education, not just in high school, but throughout all grades in both elementary and secondary school. So I'm, I'm very excited about this and appreciate the support from all the stakeholders.
Further discussion? Okay, I want to thank Representative Williams for bringing this to us and his leadership on this and corralling all the offices, because it does sound like it is very much a cross-agency approach. So seeing no further discussion, the motion is to adopt SR 24-2. Director Butler, coming to you for the roll call.
Representative Vierfloh.
Aye.
Representative Washington.
Aye.
Representative Yarquin.
Aye.
Representative Williams.
Aye.
Representative Chang.
Aye.
Representative Goulet.
Aye.
Representative Henderson.
Aye.
Representative Best.
Aye.
Representative Reed.
Aye.
Representative O'Leary.
Aye.
Vice President Patterson.
Aye.
President Thompson.
Aye.
SR 24-2 has passed unanimously.
Thank you, members. We are now moving on to the motion that I think everyone came for, which is the state resolution SR 24-3, calling for a Green New Deal for schools. Is there a motion? I'm assuming Representative Goulet or Chang might want to move this one.
My Ward II colleague got us going. Do you want to make the motion to move this?
Thank you. Yes.
So moved. All right. Thank you. I, I hear so moved. All right. And is there a second?
Well, seconded for sure, absolutely, 100%, with enthusiasm.
All right, and enthusiastic, an enthusiastic second from Representative Goulet. I think this one might be worth reading, given, because we already have a recording, so I think we should give them that. I know the impulse might be to wave, so I'm actually going to come back to Director Butler for her favorite activity, which is get the water ready, because this is going to be a good one, which is reading the resolution into the record.
Okay, here we go. State Board of Education Resolution Calling for a Green New Deal for Schools, SR 23-1. SR 24-3. Whereas the Green New Deal for Schools demands the following: Schools provide locally sourced and sustainable grown, sustainably grown lunch to all students for free, to make sure no student goes through the day hungry. Students are taught a comprehensive climate injustice curriculum developed by educators, scientists, and students, not politicians and lobbyists, that helps them to understand our history and prepares them to face the climate crisis. Schools offer opportunities to connect students with meaningful and good-paying union jobs combating the climate crisis. School buildings, buses, and other school infrastructures are updated to run on 100% renewable energy, be climate resilient, and ensure safe, non-toxic learning environments. When climate disaster strikes, school administrations have plans to help students recover and use buildings as designated relief zones for the whole community. Whereas, students of the District of Columbia Public Schools and supporters of the National Sunrise Movement are calling for updated school policies about the climate crisis and petition the District of Columbia State Board of Education to take action. Whereas, the District of Columbia still has much work to do to meet the demands of the Green New Deal for Schools and ensure that students, staff, and school buildings are equipped to face the climate crisis. And the contents of this resolution outline the underlying issues behind each demand and how leaders can address them. Whereas, supply and labor challenges consistently negatively impact school meals, and DCPS students frequently have grievances about the quality of school meals. Whereas bolstered standards for locality, health, and quality of food would improve students' diet, health, and lives. Whereas, the district ranked higher than many states in terms of the climate education standards, but still deficient in integrating comprehensive coverage of the scientific, geographical, historical, social, and cultural causes and effects of the climate crisis through a diverse range of subjects. Whereas, the 2020 literacy, environmental literacy plan outlined many strategies for ensuring schools create opportunities for students to develop into environmental stewards, including the expansion of curricular resources for environmental education, development of career and technical education programs in environmental studies, and student exposure to environmental careers. But the district has fallen short on many of these goals. Whereas, D.C. traditional public and public charter schools are not preparing students sufficiently to enter a workforce that is responsive to the impending effects of the climate crisis. For example, the estimated need for nearly 1 million trained solar energy workers in the next 22 years. Whereas outreach to expand, outreach to and expanded inclusion of pre-existing federal programs would bolster sustainable career opportunities for D.C. high school graduates, such as the National Climate Corps, the Job Corps Civilian Conservation Centers of the U.S. Forest Service, and Green Jobs Youth Pathways from Sustainability Ambassador. Whereas, the district has a goal of reducing carbon emissions by 50% by 2030 and become entirely carbon neutral by 2045, including in school buildings. But changes must be made more aggressively and efficiently to meet these goals and prepare for climate crisis. Whereas, school districts across the country are working to build and renovate schools to be sustainable, transition to renewable energy, and prepare for climate disasters, modeling solutions that could be used in the district. Whereas, all construction and substantial renovation of public buildings in the district are subject to the Green Building Act and the Greener Government Buildings Amendment Act, which requires compliance with LED B4, B4 BD plus C school standards. Whereas, the Department of Energy and the Environment has committed to its transportation electrification roadmap to help the district transition to zero emission vehicles, including 100% replacement of D.C. school buses with electric buses at the end of their useful life, which began with the Office of the Safe Superintendent for Education Division of Student Transportation recently ordering 25 buses to serve, 25 electric buses to serve students starting in the 2024, 2025 school year. Whereas, increased climate disasters will impact the day-to-day lives of students in and outside of schools, although schools will be impacted differently, especially those who are already medically at risk and those in wards seven and eight. And whereas the district's School Emergency Response Plan and Management Guide was last revised in January of 2014, and does not account for the extent of preparation needed for the climate crisis like many districts plan to do. Now, therefore be it resolved, that the state board calls on Congress and the President of the United States to pass the Green New Deal for Public Schools Act of 2023, and make landmark investments in K-12 educational equity, clean energy infrastructure, and climate resilience for students and communities across America. Be it further resolved, that the D.C. Council should revise the universal free school Be it further resolved that the DC Council should revise the Universal Free School Meals Amendment Act of two thousand twenty-three to include higher standards for locality, health, and quality of the food provided to students. Be it further resolved that the State Board calls on the DC Council to enact the Universal Free School Meals Amendment Act of two thousand twenty-three, which would provide free, universal school breakfast, lunch, and after-school snacks to all students in DCPS, public charter, and participating private schools, as well as increased funds for meal programs. Be it further resolved that, that district agencies and partnership prioritize the strategies and actions outlined in the forthcoming twenty-twenty-three Environmental Literacy Plan to promote the integration of environmental literacy into standards curriculum, curriculum professional development, post-secondary advising, career and technical education programs, and school building infrastructure and maintenance. Be it further resolved that upon the next revision of any district's state education standards, the State Board should adopt, adapt standards when appropriate to include environmental literacy and the climate crisis. Be it further resolved that the State Board calls on OSI, DCPS, and Char- Charter Local Education Agencies to add existing college and career resources to emphasize post-graduation opportunities for sustainable careers. Be it further resolved that DCPS and DGAS should evaluate the feasibility of solar panel installation for all schools that are not already scheduled for modernization. And be it finally resolved that the State Board calls on the Emergency and Safety Alliance to review and update the district's School Emergency Response Plan and Management Guide to detail up-to-date procedures for climate crises-induced disasters and protect the safety of students.
Thank you, Director Butler. Um, I think that was worthwhile in exchange for you all taking my advice, uh, that thirty of you did not have to testify tonight, uh, that we already heard you, and so, um, quid pro quo. All right, uh, that is how you do that properly. I am coming, uh, to the Student Advisory Committee, uh, for the statement.
On January eighth, the Student Advisory Committee voted twelve to four to support SR twenty-four dash three calling for a Green New Deal For Schools Resolution, recommending the resolution place a larger emphasis on equity concerning the citywide school modernization aspect.
Thank you, Representative Yarkin. Is there further discussion on the resolution? I saw Representative Williams first, I heard Representative Reed, and then I'll, I'll go back for another round.
Uh, I just want to congratulate the students on seeing this to fruition, um, and I'm excited for next steps for our city. I do want to note that there's a little disagreement on the tactics of our board. Our, our president has encouraged you to get a good night's sleep and that this is late, and Representative Goulet is now encouraging two AM testimony at the council, so it might be a whatever-it-takes strategy, but I, I, I just wanted to note that, um, and, uh, I'm excited to see this pass.
Oh, yes. I'm so excited to see this, um, go through from start to finish. I am curious about, um, the four from the student reps. It may be helpful to explain, um, what the, your colleagues or your peers were thinking to, um, help with the further advocacy somehow of their next steps, um, because I think those are worthwhile. I'm not sure what they are, but to pass to the organizers. However, I really appreciate your diligent work of, um, reaching out to the Ward eight schools that, uh, in Acosta, and then you're also following with Kramer, and not letting it go, um, because definitely stu- students, um, East River, Ward eight have, uh, deep, uh, thoughts and feedback related to all that you said. They are working on, I know with the free healthy lunches and growing their own in their school buildings, and I know that needs to be elevated, um, and it seems like you all have the time, resources, and energy to get that going. Um, so I'm looking forward to seeing them join forces with you, uh, when you take this to council and anything else that you may be taking this towards. So, thank you, and I'm looking forward to the next steps.
Representative Goulet, I saw you motion, and I don't know if anyone else is getting in the queue.
Well, I just want to thank you all again, and I think, you know, for me, it is about doing whatever it takes on this, and just don't take no for an answer, and I know you won't. You've been here, you didn't take no for an answer from us, that's for sure, and you said you keep coming back, doubling your numbers every time until we said yes, and you, and it worked. We were excited to do it, but it wo- it worked, and we got to do the same thing now. And yeah, I mean, we should stay up until, I mean, your sunrise, we will keep Mendelson up. Phil Mendelson will be up until the sun rises to hear from all of you if he's going to have everybody on the same day. And I think your testimony is meaningful, it deserves to be heard, and you've got youth on your side. You're energetic, you can stay up, and I'll do it with you. I may need to, you know, take some caffeine to do it, but I'm happy to be there with you at three in the morning if we got to be down there at the Wilson Building pushing for this, because this is so important. It's important for my kids. I've got a tw- a ten and a twelve-year-old at home, and this is their generation that has to live with the climate crisis. So, I'm really just excited to see all of you out here leading the way, fighting for this, and I'm so proud, uh, to be able to say that I've been part of this with you all, but you've led the way and you've gotten this done. So, thank you all for all your efforts here tonight, and I'm really proud of you.
Representative Chang.
All right, I know, I know you've heard me, uh, enough over the last three months, and, and, um, and, so, so just TLDR. Thank you for inspiring us, and, you know, believe in, believe in you, and, and we're here to support you as you take this further.
So, that was a message for the students, uh, for the older ones amongst us. Someone said, "What?" when you said TLDR. Anyone else? Okay, I am just going to say thank you, uh, to you all. I feel like we've gotten to know you, I, I, and I, it takes me a moment. Like, I'll remember a face before I remember a name, but I now know several of you all's names, several of you all's faces. Um, I'm so glad, uh, that you all really did, like, like, show up, anyone else who has come before the board. Um, appreciate your energy, uh, appreciate your willingness to engage, um, and appreciate just how quickly, like, you all, um, have been able to not just, like, pivot, but like, push. Um, so, thank you all. I think I am last and don't see anyone else, uh, in the queue, um, so I think that means we have finished discussing and are ready to vote. So, seeing no further discussion, the motion is to adopt SR twenty-four dash three. Uh, Director Butler, can now call the roll.
Representative Viaflor.
Aye.
Representative Washington.
Aye.
Representative Yarkin.
Aye.
Representative Williams.
Aye.
Representative Chang.
Aye.
Representative Goulet.
Aye.
Representative Henderson.
Aye.
Representative Betts.
Aye.
Representative Reed.
Aye.
Representative O'Leary.
Aye.
Vice President Patterson.
Aye.
President Thompson.
Aye.
SR twenty-four dash three calling for a Green New Deal For Students has passed unanimously.
All right, congratulations. Uh, I will ask that you allow us to pass one more resolution, uh, which is also a really good one, um, and so I don't mind if you cheer for that one as well. Um, but we will now move, um, to vote on state resolution twenty-four dash, SR, excuse me, twenty-four dash four recommending a change to the student paternity leave policy. Um, I'm going to come back to Representative Williams first, do you want to move this one?
Yes, so moved.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Hmm, y'all want to rock, paper, scissors for it? All right, so we'll go with Representative Reed. Um, a motion has been made and properly, properly seconded. Um, the motion, oh, I'm sorry, Director Butler will read the resolution into the record unless... We're, we're reading, okay. Director Butler will read the resolution into the record. Director Butler, I'm coming to you.
State Board of Education Resolution recommending a change to student paternity leave policy, SR twenty-four dash four. Whereas, the DC State Board of Education is committed to advocating for equitable policies and opportunities for all students in the District of Columbia. Whereas, it has come to the State Board's attention that there is a current need to alter the district's paternity leave policy to afford male students the same supports that are offered under the district's maternity leave policy for female students. And whereas, the State Board's advocacy on this issue aims to ensure all students in the DC public school system, both District of Columbia Public Schools and public charter school students, receive the academic and social emotional support needed as they prepare to assume the responsibilities of parenthood. Now, therefore be it resolved that the State Board calls on the DC Council to approve B twenty-three dash zero-three-one-seven Extended Students' Right To Home and Hospital Instruction Act of two thousand twenty-three with the addition of students who are non-birthing parents. Be it further resolved that the State Board, State Board urgently requests that the Office of the State Superintendent of Education change parental leave policies in both DCPS and charter sector to ensure equal paternity leave rights for male students in the district, in the district's public and public charter schools. The State Board recommends the following changes. One, approved home and hospital instruction for a minimum of three weeks during and after the delivery of a newborn child for both parents. Two, excused absences, absences for full or partial days of school for the following legitimate caretaking responsibilities. Pre and postnatal appointments, child illness, and child emergency. Three, updated codes in ASPN to reflect the difference between a DCPS student's being sick and their child being sick. Be it further resolved that the State Board urges OSI to support the successful implementation of a revised policy through providing training to schools about any changes and their implementation for students, teachers, school leaders, and office staff. Be it finally resolved that the State Board asks the State Superintendent to implement this policy during the twenty-three, twenty-four school year to ensure timely and responsive policy change that supports young parents who are also students staying on track of their college and career goals.
All right, uh, thank you, Director Butler. Uh, is there a student advisory committee statement?
Yes, there is. Um, the SAC unanimously voted to support the resolution SR twenty-four dash four recommending a change to student paternity leave policy.
Thank you, Representative Yarkin. Is there a discussion on the resolution? Representative Williams, Representative Patterson, we'll start there, Representative O'Leary.
Uh, I'd just like to briefly say that I think this is one of the things that, um, in which the board is at its best when we're able to take concerns from constituents and residents and quickly move them to be able to tweak policies that can have a big impact. And this would not have happened without, uh, Ms. Belton, who is here with us tonight, um, being able to advocate for her students, and so I just feel, um, very grateful that we can, um, be responsive to community needs, uh, and be able to, um, make this change and then pressure OSI, um, to move forward with this, um, in a way that affords our male students the same, uh, opportunities as female students in this regard.
I'll be, I'll be quick. I just want to thank, uh, Ms. Belton and my colleagues for supporting this. As a father, I think this is so important to allow this to happen, for our male students to be able to bond with their children as early as possible and to be given that, that same equity and equality as far as, you know, just having the time to do that. So, thank you so much, Ms. Belton and colleagues, for this. Uh, this is something that's overlooked, and something that I know that I had to deal with when I had, I have five children, and when my first child was born, uh, I, there wasn't any such thing as, uh, paternity leave, uh, in DCPS. So, uh, this is something that needed to be done, and I'm glad that the State Board of Education, with all our, all the help we got, is passing this.
All right, um, going once, going twice. Okay, uh, I will echo my thanks to Ms. Belton. I love, um, a solution in service of a problem and not a solution in search of a problem. Um, so, thank you, uh, for bringing this to us, um, and we will make sure, uh, we apprise everyone implicated in the resolution of what they can do, uh, to address this problem, um, assuming it passes, which I have a feeling it might. So, uh, I am closing discussion, and the motion is to adopt SR twenty-four dash four, um, and I'm coming to Director Butler for the roll.
Representative Viaflor.
Aye.
Representative Washington.
Aye.
Representative Yarkin.
Aye.
Representative Williams.
Aye.
Representative Chang.
Aye.
Representative Goulet.
Aye.
Representative Henderson.
Aye.
Representative Betts.
Aye.
Representative Reed.
Aye.
Representative O'Leary.
Aye.
Vice President Patterson.
Aye.
President Thompson.
Aye.
SR twenty-four dash four on recommending a change to the student paternity leave policy has passed unanimously.
Yes, feel free to cheer. Okay, um, so that concludes all of our votes for this evening. Members, are there any announcements or comments you would like to make before we adjourn? Yes.
Uh, really quickly, uh, I just, during the discussion for the administrative, uh, items, I just wanted to say thank you to the staff for all the amendments and iterations that these resolutions went through, so it would not have been possible without your diligence and support, and, uh, I'm gracious, greatly appreciative of that, so thank you.
Thank you, Representative Williams. I will note that I think it is a first that anyone, not representatives, but any of our, um, public testimony people thanked our staff. The students were actually the first to do that, that I've ever seen at the board, uh, which just shows how closely they've been engaged. Um, so thank you because you've been, thank you to the staff because you support us as members, um, but you also facilitate our engagement in the public in a wonderful way, so thank you very much. Other announcements or comments? Okay, um, I'm totally okay, uh, with there being no further announcements or comments, and I want to thank, uh, everyone, members, um, public, um, for their time and engagement tonight. Uh, as a reminder to our viewing public, the State Board will continue to hold in-person meetings uh, until our chambers allow us to do something hybrid, which we're looking forward to. Um, we will convene at our next, uh, February seventh working session and February twenty-first public meeting. With no further business before the board, I would welcome a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Perfect, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
I'm just going to assume the ayes have it, and this public meeting of the DC State Board of Education is adjourned at nine fifty, ooh, sorry, eight fifty-eight PM. Thank you.